Please stand and join us if you're able. Thank you. Tonight's consent agenda has one session of meeting minutes and budget transfers. Any questions or concerns or discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Seconded.
Okay, Bill, thank you. All in favor, we can do a hand vote tonight?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great.
I'm like pirates.
We're gonna move right on to public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted or in person at the microphone at Millennium Building Conference Room B. And just start with your name and address, please.
I'm Patty Long for Birchwood Drive of WA and Stony Brook Parent and a member of the WA Graduation Requirements Working Group. First, I want to say thank you to Principal Toomey for gathering a diverse group of parents, students, and staff to discuss policies that traditionally have been made without much student and parent input. I wanted to share a few thoughts ahead of tonight's presentation, just starting with a question. What is the purpose of graduation requirements? Beyond meeting state regulations, I think they should represent the skills and knowledge WA students should have before they graduate. However, our current WA policies are very restrictive, so restrictive that they take the emphasis away from student knowledge and put the emphasis on specific credit hours, scheduling, and staffing. Other districts recognize that flexible options are needed to give students the opportunity to select electives that meet their best needs, their needs best. I wanted to share with you some of those options that we discussed. One of them is one that you've heard a lot of, which is that districts that allow students to meet PE requirements through fitness and sport activities outside of school hours. This frees up students to take other electives like full-year world language, journalism, music. It's well documented on the DESI MassCor website that districts can define their own PE requirements and allow students to meet them through instructional physical activity, including but not limited to sports, private lessons, community lessons, or independent study. Other districts leverage online high school platforms to extend curriculum options. At WA, we have seats for the Edge of Seer platform, but they are not offered as an option very often. It could be appropriate in many scenarios. For example, if a parent of a hearing impaired student asks if ASL, American Sign Language, could be used to meet a world language requirement, the answer could be yes, except the answer is no. I could give you a multitude of other examples where students were denied requests because of the restricted WA policies. I hope any student, parent, or guardian watching today joins public comment or emails the school committee with their experiences so a clearer picture can be painted of the challenges that WA students face. Also important to mention, there are roughly 200 IEP 504 students with annual full-year educational support blocks in their schedule. Without additional flexibility in their course selection policies, they have significantly less opportunity to take electives that align with their strengths, interests, and goals. For example, under the current restrictions, a freshman in academic support with an interest in STEM can only fit AP Calculus and its prerequisites if they qualified for advanced math in seventh grade. Lastly, I wanted to highlight the WA Program of Studies. It covers coursework descriptions and prerequisites, but also includes restrictions not reflected in the school committee graduation requirements. As a WA managed document, it allows WA to pivot quickly each year to accommodate needs and trends. However, it also permits changes to policies with minimal oversight and input, and these changes can significantly impact student choice, course access, and department budgets. A perfect example of how problematic this approach can be is the increasingly restrictive PE policy. In recent history, students could waive PE if it didn't fit in their schedules or defer PE to open up a full-year elective block. Despite no changes in the Massachusetts PE regulations since 1999, WA PE policies have changed twice since 2017 due to a misunderstanding of state PE compliance. Rather than explore why students needed the option to waive or defer PE, the decision was made to completely eliminate PE waivers and reduce deferrals. However, we now know DESI cares very little about how a district implements its PE program. They don't care about the differences between PE and athletics, and they don't care if students meet PE requirements outside of school hours. When given the opportunity to recommend PE units for graduation, the DESI MassCor Committee recommended no specific number of units. If the student parent community had the opportunity to provide feedback on past PE policies, we would have likely seen elective course selections shift from PE to actual student interest. Instead, PE and health is the most prioritized elective graduation requirement with a mandatory semester each year, and because of this, the $500,000 PE health budget was the only major WA department with no reductions when the override failed. Also important to note is the recent WA student survey where respondents favored a reduction of PE requirements at a rate of two to one over every other subject area, including math, English, and VPA. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts. As a parent, I believe graduation requirements and course selection policies should help prepare students for the next stage in their lives. I don't see the value in requiring students to take electives if they already meet the passing standard, and I don't see the value of filling elective classrooms with students who want to be learning something else. Other districts are successfully offering flexible options to increase student access to electives and value everyone's time in the process. I hope that WPS considers doing the same.
Thanks, Patty. Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
Good evening. My name is Megan Eckroth. I live at Eight Timberly Lane, and I'm a third grade teacher at the day school. I am also a parent of two WA students and a former school committee member. I have sat in your seats and grappled with challenging budgets and the implications to our students. Tonight, I wanted to speak a little bit about equity. Westford Public Schools have always prided themselves on educating the whole child, meeting each child where they are and giving them additional support should they need it to be successful. Supporting our students, much like parenting, takes a village. With each reduction of teaching and support staff in our schools, that village gets smaller, and the disparity in the support of our students gets larger. Families with the means and time often access supplemental learning and activities outside of school, widening those gaps. Having taught grades three, four, and five in our district, I can say it starts at a very young age. As our district has decreased support services and removed elementary classroom sections, class sizes have increased and thresholds that determine qualification for reading and math services have changed. Fewer students are receiving what they need in school, and often those educational gaps lead to an increased need for emotional services. Struggling students often have lower self-esteem, anxiety, depression, and negative feelings about school. Fast forward to middle school and high school, and the equity and achievement gaps continue. Access to high-level courses at the onset of ninth grade and even eighth grade set you on a path to different courses across all disciplines with prerequisites and math placement acting as barriers. These paths are often aided by access to Russian School of Math, Kumon, and expensive tutors, to name just a few. While some of this is choice, much of it is not, and the fact is that many students are not getting what they need in school to overcome these barriers. I understand the budget and how we got here. I'm asking that you carefully reconsider any further reductions to elementary class sections, as smaller class sizes are one of the most important ways we can prioritize equity in classroom instruction. Differentiated and scaffolded lessons, small group and one-on-one instruction, and the time and attention needed to give each child what they need is much more possible with small class sizes. This is critical at these young ages when students are learning foundational skills. If we start to make our village even smaller, we will no longer be able to meet the diverse needs of our students. I hope you will reconsider these reductions and prioritize smaller elementary class sizes. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Give you a minute. Anybody online?
Nobody online.
Nobody online or no hands?
No, no hands, I should say, sorry.
Okay. Last call. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to informational updates and start with the students.
Oh, hi. Okay. So, obviously I was here last week, so there's not a lot of new updates. I know that college decisions have been coming out for some students, so it's very exciting at WA. It's literally any senior is having a conversation about college decisions that are coming out. And then Mr. Toomey also set up some spirit days for this, end of this week and then, or end of last week and this week. So Friday was flannel day, and I wore my flannel. And then Thursday is sweaters, ugly or classy, you can choose. And then it's also comfy Friday, an incentive to come for the half day. So I'm very excited for that. And then obviously, half day, everyone's looking forward to it and break. It's definitely, we're hopeful, we're almost there, and it's, everyone's very excited for it. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent and assistant superintendent.
The only update I have, again, as Matty just said, we were just here. We had our first Robinson School Building Committee meeting this morning, and I'm very appreciative of the group that has been gathered for this. You know, people volunteered to be a part of this, and the Select Board appointed members from the community to join us, and we had a great conversation this morning just to get things started. And there's clearly a significant experience in the room around different projects like this, and so I was very enthusiastic. I thought it was just gonna be a slow start because, you know, here we're just kinda getting our feet wet and kinda providing some context where we are. And just the questions that people had already, and I think just the willingness that everybody has to jump in is very enthusiastic. So I'm grateful for that, and that's our update.
Thank you. No update. Okay. School committee members. Update, Tom? Bill, you're on the agenda later?
It's coming later.
We're on the agenda.
Yes.
I was going to say something about the wonderful chorus concert.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, the chorus band orchestra concert, but I could only stay for the chorus because I had to go to rehearsal. I saw that you were also.
I was there also, and it was awesome. Yeah.
It looked amazing. I watched it on YouTube.
My kids were captivated, so that speaks volumes. Any update?
No, we're on the agenda.
Shout out to Jack Raffio.
Oh, yeah.
From across country, star third in Nationals this past weekend. A lot of pride in our student athletes, so.
I was just gonna add that if you're watching tonight and following the budget, I would also point you to last Tuesday's Select Board meeting where Town Manager Kristen Loss presented the overall town budget to the Select Board and Finance Committee. And then the town website has a budget landing page with a lot of the upcoming Finance Committee hearings and stuff that will take place on Thursdays through January. So stay tuned and.
You might want to just explain, like elaborate, what exactly happens at those meetings, like the Finance Committee, each department?
Yep, each department, I think, is scheduled, I think they actually, I heard, but I haven't seen with my own eyes, that the schedule for which departments are on which Thursday nights is on the district web, the town website also. And that's a place where Finance Committee members, or maybe Tom could explain this.
Yeah, true.
They get to ask department heads very specific questions about changes from year to year and other choices that are present in the budget. So those are usually really good conversations to learn a lot and follow along.
And I believe that it's had public input as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's public comment, yeah.
Like you really drill down into the details.
Yeah.
Some departments will fly right through because it's very minimal budget, and others will get the third degree.
Okay, great. Right with that, we're gonna jump right into business tonight, and we'll welcome up Principal Dan Toomey for a presentation on the recent working group to look at Westford Academy's graduation requirements. Take a moment to pull the slides up.
Sure.
And then feel free to jump in.
Okay. Just, there we go.
All right, thank you, Catherine. Good evening. I have the pleasure of talking a little bit about the graduation requirements for Westford Academy as it was certainly brought up in last year's budget discussions around this time in this format. And Patty had certainly had some comments. That was, I would say, was one of the leading causes of why it was a good time to look at it. And as people get to know me as a principal and administrator, I would say that I don't jump to decisions quickly, but I do review them thoroughly. And in this process, this working group made up of school personnel, community members, parents, students. Tom joined as a school committee member as well. I think we represented many different viewpoints. And, go ahead, Catherine. Next slide there.
There we go.
Some of the committee, or the working group that was reviewing the graduation requirements, we spent a lot of time. We started in June of last year. Then we picked up quite often throughout the fall and in the last month or so, almost every week, we've been meeting and talking about where we were, what our consensus would be. Really, the mission of the group was to talk about and examine the skills that our students need to be best prepared for life after Westford Academy. And in the reality of Westford Academy, we have 96% of our students go to two or four-year college, so college is definitely a piece of it. But really, it's the skills they needed for anything after Westford Academy. And also, we openly talked about how do we figure out more choice for students when selecting courses? And there was a lot of talk of graduation and then all the way through the program of studies, like how we do things, how can we do it better, how other schools do things. And there's quite a review of different schedules. Every school system does something differently. Schedules, requirements, you know, their own policies, their programs of studies. There's a lot of moving parts when it comes to, you know, what goes into student's choice and schedules at Westford Academy. Next slide, Catherine. You know, and we often reminded ourselves of what those skills are, and this is, you know, the mission and the vision, which is very much our vision of the graduate. And some of those skills that we always talk about is global citizens that are fostering creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. Those are core skills that no matter what class or curriculum, by the time you graduate Westford Academy, that is an important piece. It's right over there as well. Tonight, you can go to that one. Yeah, tonight, when we reviewed this, there's what we use, which are credits for school committee and policy. And I kinda wanted to put this chart up here of, you know, a semester is 2.5 credits, two semesters is five credits. What a unit might be determined as, which is MassCor, which is a recommendation for the minimum graduation requirements for the Westford Academy. And one unit could be a year of study or an equivalent of a subject that all standards contain in this curriculum framework. So it could be a year, it could also be less. And then the typical timeframe. So tonight, I'm gonna be jumping from units to semesters to credits, but that's generally the framework, and I'm gonna do my best to keep it to credits. Okay, because that's where the policy falls.
Okay.
Currently, our graduation requirements, as you can see, 20 in English, 20 in math, 15 in science, based three years of lab science, social studies, world history, a year-long course, and then two years of US history, five credits each, a US one and a US two. World language, of the same language, PE, one semester per year. Health, 2.5 credits freshman year, VPA 2.5, electives of 22.5. Many students, those electives, are consumed by taking a fourth year of science, a fourth year of social studies, four years of world language. I mean, those get consumed pretty much right there. Next slide there. And Tom, during the process, was very kind to put together a visual. Okay, now, this is, again, this is the current graduation requirements and what the minimum requirements would be, okay? I think the best piece of information coming out of this is the crunch that our freshmen face when they're coming in freshman year. Where is their choice for opportunities? And it's minimal. And I think we hear that year after year as far as scheduling and electives and those types of things. And again, you know, for 90% of our students that go to a four-year college, what are taking, you know, it doesn't show it their senior year on this visual representation, but they're taking another science, they're taking another social studies, they're taking another world language. So a lot of those things that are listed as minimum electives or additional electives are consumed with full-year courses for the students. Minimum requirements of 32.5, and obviously, if you take every single credit you can possibly take, you get 35 credits. And many students, especially junior and senior year, do utilize a DLT, which would be a non-credit directed learning study. Okay? Next slide.
Can I just clarify, Dan? When we say current graduation requirements, these are district requirements. They're obviously not, they're obviously including the state requirements, but we also have our own mixed in with this.
Correct. At the end of the day, we adopt what those are. It is a recommendation from MassCor, and it's a recommendation from the state. So we'll talk more about that. Because there's another wrinkle in there with, you know, the MCATs ballot change and competency determination, but we'll talk about that.
Can I ask another quick question here? Is VPA junior year just an example?
Yeah, that's just a visual. It can be taken anytime.
Got it.
I think it was to balance, to show that it wasn't all freshman year, everything already programmed.
But you can take it any year. And some students will take it their freshman year, or if they don't have room in their schedule, they're taking it other points.
One more question. Dan, what percentage or proportion of chair of people are taking 35 versus 32.5 credits?
I would say, okay, you can do some math in my head real quick. I would say for juniors and seniors, I would say that, I'd say 50% of each of those are taking 32.5. I think that's my rough math, if that works out correctly.
So half of our upperclassmen are maxing out?
Or taking the 32.5. Maxed out would be 30, yeah, exactly. So maxed out would be 35, correct.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, and then just a quick question on the maroon health in freshman year?
Yep.
Is that?
That's a requirement?
That's a requirement, yes.
Or freshman year?
So one be, one health as the two semesters.
Yeah, and so freshman year, typically, and we have had a policy of deferring PE your freshman year because the health is a requirement freshman year. So that is where we get, that is where the issues of electives and choice come in, is really that freshman year. And again, that's like the biggest thing on this visual is freshman year is, you have the least amount of option and choice.
Thanks.
So based on our research, you know, starting in 2021 and 2019, the graduation requirements have been reviewed by the school committee. There are, we used to do PE and health, a whole different model. Prior to 2016, we also, in 2021, we used to have a technology requirement, which was a 2.5 credit, all right? Matty, maybe?
Actually, I got out of that one. I deferred until sophomore year, and I didn't have to take it, and all my friends who took that class were like, are you kidding?
So, you know, so there was a technology requirement that we used to have in place, and then as students have become so much more savvy and proficient with the technology, that was a decision in 2021 to allow more choice for students. Okay?
And just to clarify, the meeting dates are links?
Yeah, they are live links.
Thanks.
The scope of the review, we took a good look at what the MassCor recommendations are and our alignment with those. We reviewed, obviously reviewed our existing graduation requirements. We did an extensive compare and contrast with our similar type schools. You know, our market basket type schools, our schools that are in the area. We also reviewed some of the highest rated schools. We were curious to see if they were doing something different that might provide more guidance to us. We looked at our dual county league schools, which we're a member of. We looked, and a lot of time, there was a big crossover into our program of study from graduation requirements into our program of study. So we spent a lot of times talking about those policies and the connection to the graduation requirements. Go to the next slide, Catherine. We did survey students, grades 10 through 12, which was, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as well, which we had a good response rate from students as far as the information gathered. We also, this was also presented with my school council several times to provide their feedback. In the initial meetings, we had students gathering WA graduate perspectives of recent graduates in the last few years of how they felt like the graduation requirements prepared them for school and life after, and those were very favorable. We also did research from the many different schools, courses, options, and programs of studies like that. The scheduling that is, there are a variety of schedules throughout Massachusetts for sure in public schools. And how, you know, a lot of those come down to the length of the school day they might have. We have a very short school day. And, you know, so there's just, there was a lot of it that wasn't directly tied to graduation requirements, but in a way it was, okay? Just some higher level reviews that we sent out to all students, 10 through 12, we had 446 responses, that's about a 30% response rate. 214 of the students, of the respondents, when they were asked if they would increase any requirements, 48% of the students responded said they would not increase any requirement, they'd keep everything currently the way it was. The other 52% was spread amongst many different courses and different options. The 178, 40% of the students responded reported that PE requirements should be decreased. When we asked the students if anything should be decreased, that was the highest. The next one was the VPA, and then it was evenly distributed along some math and science and all things. So we were just, we were curious to see what our students felt. This is just an example, and it was a very small writing, but there are about four pages like this of the schools that we looked at. The Dart schools, the highest rated schools, the area schools, schools that we just found that we had a similar makeup, even if they weren't an exact Dart school of ours. Schools that we were like, okay, how are they doing this there? You know, one that kinda kept coming up continuously was Wellesley, and they very much say, you can take whatever you want, but if you're looking at colleges and you're looking at these types of things, you should be taking these. So there are, and that's a very, very small percentage of schools that have that, okay? During the process, one of the questions out of the gate that we talked about was, do we go down that road or do we still continue with the structure of graduation requirements? And the group consensus was, continue with the structure of the minimum graduation requirements. MassCor, which is a state recommended program of study, right, intended to align high school coursework with college and workforce expectations. That is their mission, and it is a recommendation. It's four units of ELA or English, four of math, Algebra II or Integrated Math equivalent, science, three years of lab science, world language. It's very much in line with ours, okay? The arts, they say one unit of recommended coursework, okay? Ours is, in their one unit, is either, remember, it's either one full year of a program of study or meeting the requirements of the curriculum on that particular topic, okay? So it could be one year or less, and that's something to note, okay? An additional core courses, the five additional core courses, which could be broken down for semester-based courses, which are 2.5 credits, or year options of five classes. If a student takes a fourth year of science, that technically accounts for additional coursework, okay? Now, when you compare all these things, you have what our current credits are. And these are, remember, these are the minimums, minimum graduation requirements. The MassCor, where they are. You have a majority, we tried to nail down what the majority of our schools that we compared ourselves to, okay? And then the last one is what the four-year state university system, so like UMass, all the state schools, that is their minimum, what they want, make sure that they see coming in for incoming freshmen at their schools, okay? So that's just a comprehensive view of the many different, you know, either curriculums or recommendations of MassCor or the other schools. or recommendations of MasCor or the other schools, kind of gives you an idea of where we fall, okay?
So, so is it fair to say in phys ed and health, for the majority of DART plus districts, their units, we're talking about full years then?
Well, in this situation, they're talking about semester-based on the four years. Some of them could be, some schools did say year, but how they do it within that year is diff, it doesn't meet as regular as say an English class does.
Yep.
Okay? They might meet every other day, they might be, you know, the equivalent of what a semester might be or a quarter might be, okay? And majority of them, everybody has an element of health included, whether it's under wellness or the different types of PE and wellness classes that are offered throughout many different schools.
And I'm reading that right and saying MasCor isn't saying that health needs to be a requirement and it's also suggesting that it's not a requirement for kind of the four-year state universities? I'm reading that right, okay?
Correct.
And Dan, the dual enrollment students are the ones who split time with middlesex, right?
Correct.
How does, is that, that's senior year, right?
Junior or senior year, yep.
And does that just eat into the electives?
They're, they're still meeting our graduation requirements, so they still gotta take four years of English, they still need, they still need to meet what our graduation requirements would be. So if they are, if they elect to take a science there, their junior year, and then any classes after that eat into whatever their electives might be. Usually when students are going to dual enrollment, by the time they leave freshman and sophomore year, they're well ahead of the, the credits that they need for the minimum graduation requirements. So students that are looking for, typically looking for dual enrollment, are looking for a different environment, they might be looking for sort, certain type, you know, they're just, they're almost ready for college and it is certainly a wonderful opportunity for them. And it's in, there are different electives at dual enrollment that we might not offer here as well. But at the end of the day, they, whether it's dual enrollment or you're Westford Academy student, they all still meet the minimum graduation requirements.
For Westford?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, before you leave this chart, so, because this feels like it's like a, a good summary of what you guys looked at, right? It's got the DART, the MasCor and then our current. So is the he, is the headline here that we're pretty similar for core? I'm sorry, I can't see it. And then the PE and health and VPA are some differences, but?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll get to those in upcoming slides, yeah.
Oh, you have a different, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of give you the summary of where our, our big differences might lie, whether it's in MasCor or in the DART type schools.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's all right, that's all right. So, you know, again, when we were reviewing all these, we, we pulled the laws from Massachusetts general, Mass General Laws, Physical Education and Health, and it does say that it, it shall be taught every year and that there are like other options of, this is the way the law is written, the calisthenics, the gymnastics, military drill, et cetera, those types of things are allowable. The health part does fall under chapter seventy-one as well, that health shall be taught. So those are some of the existing laws that we have been working around. And then, now we get to what are significant differences that we, we, I would say discovered or realized. When we looked at our DART schools, okay, many of them either had less semesters or coursework or time in PE and health than we did, okay? So with our twelve-point-five credits of health in PE when you add them, we're on the higher side, right? The other thing that we looked at was a majority of the DART schools, one semester, class per year, is the schedules and the models were, there's, it's vastly different how it's implemented throughout different schools. So many schools have a, a ninth grade and tenth grade wellness class, which could be a combination of PE and health, the health curriculum. So when we compare ourselves against our schools, that was something that we came away with is PE and health, when you add those two together, we are on the, on the amount of semester hours and times they meet, we're on the higher side, okay? Another thing that stuck out that we had talked about was we currently require two-point-five credits of VPA, okay? One semester or as I like, as I would say, it would be one unit. Now, MasCor recommends one unit. So our districts, our schools that we compare ourselves to, many of them do say one year or two semesters, okay? They clearly say one year or two semesters. Ours is one semester, okay? So that is, that is a difference, all right? Now, you go to the next slide. So we talked a lot about changes and potential changes, additions, subtractions, one of those being, we spend a lot of time in this committee, talking about physical education alternatives, okay? Desi's interpretation allows for this and there are, there are not, is not a majority of schools. I would say it's a small amount of schools utilize this option, athletics for example, allowing athletics for a physical education requirement. I would say it is a topic amongst schools in Massachusetts right now, I, I can't deny that it, that it's not. I would say, so that option is being considered and talked about. We also spent a lot of time talking about personal financial literacy curriculum. There's growing trend nationwide of requiring some type of personal financial literacy for high school students. Twenty-six states require some sort of curriculum and there's growing interest statewide as well. And amongst the Westford Academy students, we have students that are signing up and doing course registrations for personal finance or Money Matters, they're involved with many of our DECO-type programs and our business courses because there's an element of money that students are realizing that they're interested in. We also talked a lot about computer science as a possible option for graduation. It's a national interest and even at this point last year, there was a bill in the Massachusetts legislature talking about making curriculum around computer science a requirement. That did not move forward. We found schools also have a requirement for a, a community service, whether it's hours of, hours related to credits or just a graduation requirement of some sort, X amount, amount of hours needed to be met. And we did not pursue that one, we felt like that it would be very difficult to have those things happen during the school day and that's a theme I'll talk a little bit more about. We also talked about increasing VPA from two-point-five to five credits. So remember, MasCor recommends one unit, this description of one unit keeps, will keep coming up. We said, okay, is it even possible with our staffing, right? And approximately, we, we discovered that approximately eighty seniors would need to take an additional VPA course this year to meet the requirement.
Just to be clear, that is graduates this year that would have, if this were in place four years ago, they could have taken it.
Not that you're saying they will have to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct, thank you.
I think I applied to that situation.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's that it, over the past four years, eighty students would have needed to take, if this were actually in existence.
Correct.
When would the requirements go into effect?
My recommendations?
Yes.
I would say.
What's your proposal?
For two years out, so the class of twenty-thirty, so currently seventh graders.
Right, so they would have plenty of time to take those classes.
Correct. Okay. So, next slide, physical education. So, I mean, we spent a lot of time, and the consensus of the working grouped, working group was either to restructure the health PE or keep it the same, okay? So at the end of the day, the group, we came to an agreement to restructure health and PE to allow more flexibility in scheduling as a preferred option. Because you remember, that freshman year, we do have, that is like, it's a very difficult year for freshmen because you have health, you have PE unless you have some sort of deferral. And when we have deferrals, we're not necessarily following what the MGL's law should be. So the next piece is why not pursue PE alternatives at this time such as athletics? We talked a lot, there's a lot of reasons. One of them is it is not an equitable option, there are students that would not be able to do those things to meet those requirements. We would have, we had, we had a presentation from Brian Rourke in collaboration with our athletic director to talk about are PE and athletics the same thing? And what we realized is they are not. They are two different things. Yes, there are some similarities, but they are certainly different things. And some of those is, we have many, many wonderful coaches here, there's, there's no question about it. There's many of them that are not teachers, certified teachers in the school system. They are, they have meeting the, the minimum requirements for MIAA and our policies as a school system, but they are not certified teachers. We had a concern about time on learning taking place outside of the school day. That's another issue for us. The fees that we have, like the avenues of fees and, yes, we have avenues to, for financial need, but still some of those things can be deterrents and have an impact. Roster limitations, let's say a student is anticipating on playing in a particular sport and there's, there, we have roster limitations, there are some programs and sports that have limited options. It is certainly not the same curriculum and I, I'd say the definition of the alternative PE that, of the schools that we have experienced, it is wide-ranging. I have several examples of schools, including Bedford and Newton South, that used to allow some of these alternatives, but have since pulled back because they just felt like it was, there were too many variables, it was, it did not meet what they needed to do as a school system. And certainly equity was one of them.
Can I ask a quick question on this slide? When the DART comparison, I don't know if this was, if this is something that's hard to find in other districts, but I was curious if you know from this list, like, how many might be also allowing the deferring? Or is that impossible to tell because we're just looking at like units and semesters?
Yeah, that was, that was, that's very difficult to tell. I guess we would have to dive into a program of studies.
Okay.
From, from many of those to see how they were implemented, if they were not readily available in the school policy, in the, in the school policy.
Okay, thanks.
So this one's been a little bit of a, a moving target. In the middle of this process, when the ballot measure came along and then we heard the result of it, you know, Desi told us that on December fifth, they'd have more guidance provided. They did provide more guidance. Sure, would you like to talk a little bit about this one?
Yes, they said more guidance will be forthcoming. That's what they said. And then there's a meeting this Wednesday in which I think they're going to clarify what more guidance is forthcoming.
Which guidance?
And which guidance. But to that end, one of the things that they did say, well, Desi hasn't said this, but some different legal counsel has sort of been talking to school districts, say, you definitely want to make sure that the school committees are prepared and ready to determine what the required courses are, because in, since the MCAS is no longer qualifying for the competency determination or the CD that comes along with the diploma, it will be on the local governing body to say what is that CD? What, what do students need to do in order to, in order to achieve that CD? And you, we will need, you will need to vote on something within the next couple of months to make sure that any of our, any members of the class of twenty-twenty-five, we are clearly able to articulate what they need to do in order to, to achieve that. If they, for the class of twenty-twenty-five, if they already passed the required MCAS exams that were part of it before, then it's not a problem. But if we have any students who had yet to receive a passing grade on the MCAS exams, that's where we need to make sure that we don't want to have something lingering that we're not prepared to let them know in a timely manner. So I would say as part of this conversation, one of the things as we get that guidance from the state, we'll be sharing it with you, it really just means we need to have that clarified in the graduation requirements, there, there needs to be some language about what our local determination is for the CD.
Is that, is that not essentially though saying they have passed all their, they've taken all their credits and passed?
It depends. I mean, yeah, that's why, that's why they're, they're, Desi has released their frequently asked questions and some of them are clear as mud, right? And some of them are a little bit clearer, but they, with all of them, they do keep saying more guidance is forthcoming, right?
So this is also another case of, we don't want to go that route of Wellesley, I think you said, which is, eh, take whatever you want.
Right, right.
I, I think one, one of the things in the frequently asked questions that helped me figure out what, kind of what they were saying as possible outcomes is, and this might answer your question, is that districts could add an MCAS score on their own to their own policy, right? So you could have this list of classes and say, this is important to us, this is how we know your, you know, your CD. So that's what I think they mean as like whether you have a, a policy saying it.
Would a CD though not just be also you've passed your classes in school?
It is, but, but the CD is the specific language that's attached with all of the different federal and state requirements. And so that was something that was added to local graduation requirements so that there is this sort of unifying standard of some kind, but now without the MCAS as that determining measure, we need to, we still need to meet that, that need. So in some cases, it's just going to be, the school committee will be saying, these courses must be passed. And in, in, in addition to the graduation requirements, it might be, and we're, in some cases, like, I mean, students have to pass four years of English, right? So that's something that has to happen in far the graduation requirements. But we haven't necessarily determined exactly which science classes students, it says that they have to take lab sciences, but have we really said that they have to pass this or, and whereas the MCAS exams, so English isn't the best example, right? It's, it's going to be more specific when we look at, at science. And, I mean, it will come into play because it will also be, you know, making sure that this will be back, the back, the back end of it is that we're already making sure that our curriculum is aligned to the state standards, but it'll be helpful if we identify that, for example, I mean, MCAS was measuring tenth grade standards, right? Or actually eighth and tenth grade standards, but at the tenth grade level. So it's, it's a little bit more like, okay, these are going to be the factors that we say must be, must, must work towards that CD.
So it could be as simple as our existing policy with like an added line?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Very much so. I think it's just going to be a asterisk, this is what, this, this is what needs to happen for the CD.
Yeah, okay.
So, so generally, keeping the four years of English, keeping all the other, the, the main pieces of the current graduation, the only, the only changes that the committee would recommend is changing our health and physical education frameworks to match the twenty-twenty-three frameworks that have come out and restructure the PE and healthy program, PE and health program, go to more of a wellness type model. And by doing this, it would take those twelve-point-five credits and make them ten credits, okay? Essentially two-point-five credits each year. For us to do that, we need to restructure how that program is and that's going to take some time. You know, not, and we're already into scheduling for next year at this point anyways. So a class of twenty-thirty, basically this year's seventh graders would be in effect for them. Because at the end of the day too, also, if we, and this is where I need the health and wellness and the physical education department to determine what this model looks like. Because it could impact ninth and tenth graders, it could be, we just change where, where It could be, we just change, where, where do we continue to keep our health? Because that was something, our health curriculum within the model, that was something that we all agreed is, was important. The other, the next one was, we wanted to maintain VPA at 2.5 credits. Our Desi accountability, when you look on the Desi website, we are already meeting, 100% of our students are meeting the MasCor requirements, okay? So, the last point was, the maintaining 32.5 credits for grades 9, 10, and 11, and formally change it to 30 credits for grade 12. There, as it's written right now, it does say that administration can, you know, reduce a student's schedule from 32.5 to 30. The reality is, more students are looking for that, their senior year for college application process and that intensive element of it. Or the, the heavy course loads that they're, that they are using, it could utilize essentially a full year DLT. And-
Question on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would, would you frame it as a full year DLT, so semester 1, semester 2, there wouldn't be the option of stacking 2?
It'd be 1 and 1.
Be 1 and 1, okay.
The, the benefits of the recommended change, it doesn't sound like much. But 2.5 more credits available to students equals more choice. That gives them more opportunity to take electives, especially that freshman year schedule, to add an elective or start a track that might not have been available previously. So, there's actually, there's more opportunity freshman, freshman year to, to take some courses or electives. We would be following the MGL, requiring PE to be taught every year, deferrals no longer needed or allowed. We'd be allowing more choice in physical education and demand for health classes or electives. We would, this would provide us more opportunity to offer more electives, which we need. We need more electives, we need more choices in our schedules. We also, this is a, an ideal time to align the new PE and health comprehensive frameworks, which came on 2023, the first time they've been updated in 25 years, with how our classes are offered and the structure of our program. So, there are many benefits here. So, those are, those are the main changes. Now, we didn't go ahead and write the policy because that is where we turn it over to you, as a school committee in the policy, to identify what that policy might look like. Questions?
I'd like to circle back to the whole idea of unit, units for VPA.
Sure.
It's my understanding from looking at the documentation on the Desi website for MasCor in the frequently asked questions, question number 12, it says a unit represents a full academic year of study or its equivalent in a subject. So I think there could be some confusion there. Also, when I researched it, it also said that the MasCor curriculum includes one year of the arts. So I'm not sure about the whole compliance issue that's concerning to me.
So, in the MasCor clarifications, there is language that says it is, one unit is one year? Or the equivalent of, that came right from MasCor, that language?
Yeah.
An equivalent-
This is also coming from MasCor.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. And I'm thinking, I'm seeing the DART schools listing maybe one year of arts.
Yep.
And I think that's probably more in line with the compliance for MasCor.
Sure. Yeah, and that was something that we did notice in the, the, the DART schools was, it was a year or two semesters.
Right, which I think is more in line with what colleges are looking for.
If you go back to-
Oh, the, the grades?
There, yep.
This one?
Yep.
The- The four-year, the four-year state universities, for sure, that, there's that one, and that's Massachusetts. Colleges, there's no question, colleges are looking for the most challenging schedule in addition to your interests and whatever those electives might be.
So they're saying one unit, and I think one unit is one year of arts. Also, was there an, any art staff?
I just want to clear up, because you're pointing to the MasCor, but I think your question just now was about the state universities.
Saying that they don't have the requirements.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the university doesn't have specific requirements for PE, health, or visual art, or VPA, but they do want you to have two electives. So they want to know that you've taken electives.
Right.
I think, I, I hear what you're saying. I think what Mr. Toomey is, is, has said and is, I think there is some inconsistency with it, but that the MasCor is also saying that a unit can be the full, complete study of a content area, even if it's in less time. So like, the idea of, you know, a ceramics class, right? Where you're going to be looking at all of the different standards that they're expecting within that, that would, that would qualify, is the way in which they're looking at that. So I feel like it is an inconsistency there.
Right, do we have classes like ceramics that cover an entire year in one semester?
No, they, they, they meet the, they meet all the standards within one semester.
Within one semester.
Yeah. So it's about, are you hitting the standards in that content area?
Because I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
I, I think that, that's, I think that kind of, that's the question that has put them in a, in, that, that's what they're looking at. This is what it's saying. And I will say, in all of this process, some of the frustration is that Desi does not provide the clear guidance that they claim to provide, because they just don't, right? They basically say, it's really up to you, but then they'll tell you all these reasons why it really shouldn't be up to you. Or that, all the reasons why you won't necessarily meet all of these needs. And I think this is another one of those examples where I think we can keep looking at it, but I think there's a, the information says one thing, and then other examples say something else over here, which is what I think some of the challenge has been for the committee.
It just seems a very short amount of time for students to experience an art form, which is one semester out of their entire four years. And I know that sometimes students do participate in various arts electives. In middle school, there's some requirements, but it, there's a rotating schedule, it's a little bit sporadic. So I think, it, it's concerning to me that it's such a short amount of time for an entire four years. And also, I'm wondering about a parent's survey, was there any thought given to, uh, surveying parents about what they thought of in terms of graduation requirements?
Yep, we, we had talked about, uh, parent surveys. And we felt that providing the recommendation to the committee and then communicating to the parents at this point would be the next, because it is a policy that we're getting into. So, like, just how, you know, from my staff and the staff at Westford Academy, there's been no poll to them, right? I've also, but as far as this one, because it's, the, the charge, the charge was basically to make a recommendation to the school committee, and now the policy committee will take over. And our, our thought was to have it available here, and then in this format, as Patty has already done, and I'll communicate in my weekly emails around, here are the graduation requirements that we have recommended. And your input can be gathered in, in several different ways at the, at the policy.
So what will be the ways that the parents will respond to the input, by email?
In the, the same way that Westford Public Schools would do their policy over the next couple-
Yeah, I think similar to the start, school start time tonight is being presented to you, and then there's going to be feedback.
If we choose to do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
How we solicit feedback is, it could be public comment through a policy like we normally do, that process. Go ahead.
Can I ask one question? So, I, I just think, so world languages is 10 current credits and PE is 10 current credits. And we're saying, right now, that the 2.5 credits has to be taken each year for the PE. Does the same apply for the world languages? Or can you take your 10 credits over two years or, or what have you?
So, the world language classes are five credit classes.
Oh, okay.
So two years of a world language is the, is the minimum recommendation of the same language. And many, many of the students take four years.
Okay.
Or three or four years.
Can you go back to-
But there's, but there's no requirement for them to do it each year, they can, because of, obviously, they're a higher thing. So I just, I'm just thinking of the scheduling, so you have to do PE every year, but not necessarily world languages, even though they're the same amount of credits. Although interestingly, world languages is kind of like the state's then requirements over PE. So I just think it's interesting.
I actually have a question.
Yeah, Maddie.
So, you're proposing 10 credits, so four semesters of, of a gym or PE class for the class of 2030. Would that include like a required freshman health for freshman year? And then the other three, if I was a freshman and I was like, okay, I want to get my health class and a alternate, whatever it is, PE class in the same year, could that be done? Like, or is, are you going to require like, uh, like, a sim, a kind of a, more of a rigid, I guess you would possibly say like, two and a half credits every single year? Or is, will it be open to like, like say I was someone who wanted to do dual enrollment in senior and junior year, and I really wanted to go ahead and push on more complicated or challenging classes, and I want to get all of my gym requirements done in, in freshman sophomore year? Is that something that we could do, or a student could do, or?
So, it, it would be 2.5 credits a year.
Yeah, okay.
What I had talked about, working with the department and the members and Brian Rourke, is like, we would need to restructure that.
Yeah.
So, it might not be called health, it might be called freshman wellness, which would be a combination of health and PE for 2.5 credits. And then after that, I mean, again, it could be this. It could be, you could have a variety of options in PE as we're currently building to meet the need for grades 10, 11, and 12.
Gotcha, thank you.
While we're on that, can I ask a clarifying question? Is health always freshman year for, is that just a Westford thing?
Majority of schools, I would say, it's either freshman or sophomore year.
Then there is an optional like senior health too, that, that WA does offer.
My understanding is that it covers a lot of the, the things that students are dealing with as they enter into the high school.
So it's developmentally timed, okay. Got it, thank you. I feel like someone just was just about to, Sean's thinking of his question. Can you, I'll buy you some time. Can you go to the colorful slide?
I knew you'd like that one.
Colorful one.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
There you go.
I'm a color person too. I know it's bad to represent everything in colors, but-
It just, just doesn't matter color, but visual is very helpful. Can you talk a little bit about what this looks like with academic support?
Sure. So for freshman year, those two, those bottom 2.5s, the light gray and the dark gray would be used for academic support.
It's a full year?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And then same, so it's a full year.
Okay.
So if you have academic support in your schedule freshman year, and you need to take PE and health, you have very limited room in your schedule.
Yeah, the bottom two, the bottom two are taken up all four years.
So you really don't have any electives then?
Can someone take the, the language in different years?
You could not recommend it.
Okay. Is that, when you say not recommended, is that like they have to get an approval process, or?
No, not, it, um, it's just for the-
Taking a year off of-
Taking a year off from a language, you're going into a higher level language.
But if, but if, would a student have had language if they're in academic support in middle school?
Maybe. Not necessar, they, they might not have, but some have.
We also, we did talk about that around even some of the others, like the sciences, whether or not you can put it off one year, and the stress that that then puts on a senior. You know, that, you know, whether it's scheduling, or I have, I absolutely have to pass this, there's no room for error, so, so.
I'm glad I got them all out of the way. It's not like, it's a lot.
Your point, it is true, if someone hasn't already taken a language, or they wanted to wait to start to take a language, they could wait until their sophomore year.
Especially because some of those entry level ones are rotating, right? We don't always offer-
Correct.
Right?
Inappropriate.
But this may be where the local graduation criteria comes into play. If we're talking about passing courses or GPA, you know, that, what, what you push off to later now compounds, right? Without a, without a MCAS competency determination.
So I just want to, I guess, zoom out to last year's budget conversations a little bit. So one thing, a couple of things that I remember hearing at that time from the community and some of our conversations were about, we had a lot of, a big presence of VPA students who were talking about, like this, the, the constraints in being able to not take a full year. And what I took away from that was that they wanted a little bit more flexibility. So I, I appreciate that the PE, health, possible combination does that, which then gives them, gives somebody the two bottom gray ones in freshman year and to, to fill with an instrument or, or a VPA. And then that maroon one becomes a, a gray one, right? Okay. And another thing I remember hearing about, or at least reflecting on as, from where we sit, is, you know, the, the adjust, staffing adjustments that happened at WA last year, there, there was, can you remind us a little bit about the class sizes at PE? Because I know that that's kind of the elephant in the room, right? That, that department was not adjusted at all.
Yeah, the, they are by far and away the largest, largest class sizes. They're over 30 in almost all the sections, or they're very close to it. It's, it, they are huge classes.
And there, it's a, it's usually a mix of, mix of grades?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, did that buy enough time, Sean?
Completely, um, subject. Do we offer, do we offer any courses pass fail?
Um, in certain situations, we, we, we might need to do that, but generally it is a regular, a regular grade scale that we use.
You said pass fail, right?
Yeah.
I heard Pascal, and I was like, isn't that like an old computer language? And I was like, oh, that's, and then I was thinking, I don't know if they use that anymore, but you said pass fail. I didn't hear you correct.
And I guess, my thought is, and this is a, a discussion for a different time, is that we, we often have discussions here about how much of the, the high school model is geared towards satisfying the college admission process, right? And one of the reasons why I'm excited, you know, and I, I'm actually a big advocate for, as Ed, but, what I'm excited for is it frees up some more electives and allows students to take risks and try new things and stuff. But, you know, that in itself comes with a risk too, because is a student going to be apprehensive to try something new out of fear that they wouldn't be able to achieve a certain grade or something, out of fear of the college admission process? I mean, I'm not speaking from experience, I have very young kids, so I can't, I haven't went through that, but I could, I don't know. It strikes me that that, that could come up. And again, different conversation for a different time.
One of the things that kind of came up in the, because there, there was a lot of discussion around PE. And one of the things that came up was the idea of, if we did start to go down the road of alternatives, it cannot be in the lens of budget, a budget solution, because we are required to offer these classes, right? And if we start budgeting, assuming that 20% of students are going to use the override, you know, or the substitute, then we have that risk of, now we have those class sizes being 20% bigger, because, you know, they may not in any given year, for whatever reason. And actually, we had, uh, two or three sport athlete parent, and he said that he would not even want his child to use athletics, because it would just keep ramping up the expectations, because you're replacing that time with now another weighted class that comes with homework, comes with responsibilities, so.
I will say, I, I definitely have found gym challenging at times to work in my schedule, but I will say for this year, something that I've- but I will say for this year, something that I've appreciated about it, it is a break from my classes. I, I find myself thankful that it's in my first semester, because I haven't had homework. If I have gym for a day in a DLT, I only have three classes with homeworks, and that has been really nice, because I know that, um, it's, I don't need to use my brain as much as, you know, an AP government class or an AP French class, it's, it's much less taxing. So I do appreciate the, the gym requirement for that reason.
So you were mentioning, there's, there's one thing about the MGL that I wanted to ask if this came up. As you were looking, and I'll be honest, I really need to say, really some more time to kind of process this, but, um, I remember in discussions and even just looking at some of the comparisons you were saying earlier on, did the discussion come up specifically about the MGL? Because my memory of that is that, that's even a little bit fuzzy, that even though it's the, in the MGL, DESI aren't necessarily enforcing it, there's other districts who are doing it different ways and seem to be okay with it. So I'm just curious, did you have a conversation specifically around that MGL requirement of, of having to teach it each of the four years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had, we had a lot of conversations, um, around that piece of it. And in some of those clarifications, they would often refer to, um, and especially in the Mass Core one, because remember, this is Mass Core and DESI interpreting what the law is.
Yeah.
They would say, um, if you accept other courses for graduation requirements, then you then therefore could accept what your alternative PE classes might be. We don't, we don't really accept other course courses for graduation requirements.
So if it, that, uh, that clarifies it, so we could only have that option if we were basically doing alternative?
For everything.
For everything, okay.
Which puts you in a weird predicament, because it's like, at what point is mock trial a substitute for social study?
Slippery slope.
Right, yeah. Makes sense.
Do you have a question for you? You had mentioned, um, the difference between teachers being certified and then necess- they might not necessarily be certified if someone's choosing an alternative. Is there a requirement for, for us to monitor any of the, um, standards if someone were to choose an alternative? To look at a certification or an attendance or?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of questions that I have even about that. You know, I have, I have a lot of questions about those things. And we, we did spend time looking at the forms and the programs and like the avenues of how these were accepted. You know, a nearby school, Littleton High School, has been doing this for years, small school, different, different size school for sure. It's multiple sports that you have to do, you have to do them by a certain time. But that piece of the certifications, I, I have major concerns about that.
Right, and I guess I'm just thinking about Cory checks and fingerprints and that type of thing that we run.
I mean, we, for our, for our coaches, there are those baselines that are still happening, like to be in.
But if it was another program, if it was something, if it was a-
Oh, correct, oh, correct, yeah, something that has nothing to do with, absolutely.
And we did talk a, a little bit about what Sean raised, you know, whether or not it is a slippery slope of what can substitute for math or, or whatnot. And, you know, there was some discussion about, well, you know, can we make the policy that substitutions can only be for XYZ? You know, but then it's, it really came down to a lot of that equity of, you know, if you have access to, you know, the, the Russian school math, you know, and another student doesn't, you know, so it just, there were a lot of questions that came up for that. And, yeah, there, there was definitely the recognition of a slippery slope of accepting classes. And actually, the, the other comment, I think, was around the, the mandate to offer a free and equitable education. And again, is it really free or equitable if we start pulling it from everywhere? So, you know, there were, it, it was a very broad discussion on all subjects.
Do you think it's interesting that forty percent of the students love to decrease the requirement? Which I thought was interesting.
And that's the, of the respondents, just to be clear, so.
I could speak to that if you'd like. Uh, it's, gym is a, is a challenging class, I, I definitely, I kind of, I go back and forth on it a lot. Like, I guess I said earlier, and I guess I would contradict myself, while I enjoy it and while I like the break, on days that I have homework, a lot of homework or things do, it's, it can be stressful to have to go in a gym class and, and participate in an activity that, that is fun, but I have other stuff I, I could be doing for college applications. It definitely was, I'm like, ooh, I'm sitting here for an hour and I can't be on my Chromebook, and I have stuff to do and I'm feeling productive and I'm awake and ready. You know, for example, tomorrow I have a swim meet and I, the bus is at two fifteen, I won't get home until eight thirty, nine o'clock. And that's like shower, dinner, like, you know, driving, um, underclassmen home that need a ride from day school, or, or not day school, from Westford, um, Westford Academy. And so having, like, having that gym block can be stressful sometimes, because I, sometimes I find myself wanting, um, extra time to do work. I am a privileged senior and I have a DLT, so I guess I can't really speak to that. But for underclassmen who don't have a DLT in their schedule, they, they face the same problem. The freshmen and sophomores are gonna be right along with me at that meet on the bus, you know, needing to eat dinner and shower when they get home and, and get to bed at a reasonable time, because we all need sleep. So it's, it's a tough kind of thing. I would say the general, um, consensus at WA is that gym is, is, um, it's a tough class, because it, you go back and forth, and I think a lot of students could do without it. But I also think that it, it can be beneficial in some ways, it's very s- case by case.
So you think it's more kind of time of importance as opposed to it's impacting their ability to take other electives or?
In, in some cases.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I will say, um, sophomore year, a lot of, and Mr. Tumi can speak to this too, a lot of students choose to double up on math, take two math classes, so if you were to look at that course and add in, you know, an extra row of math class to be able to make calcul- to take calculus by senior year, that's what I did. It definitely was like, I only could choose, I only had, with, I, so that's, that's what my sophomore year looked like. And I added a, a math class and I only had two, a semester of wiggle room. I was only a semester elective, because I had to take gym. And I was kind of like, oh, I was really hoping to take photography, um, and I didn't that year. So I definitely, um, I definitely find myself wishing I had a little more choice and I could prioritize other things above gym. But some people really enjoy gym. It can, some people, that's their, that's their physical edge, um, that's their movement for the day. That's where they get to, to really move and get out of the chair, and I think that, that also can be really beneficial. We do a lot of sitting and screen time, and I think it's a nice break.
So, um.
There's a lot.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm wondering sort of if there's a reaction from administration too, right? Because this was a working groups recommendation. I don't know if you've, yeah, I assume you've seen it before, but, um, and then what you're kind of thinking for what, uh, implementation would look like in that timeline?
I mean, first of all, I, I, yes, Mr. Tumi shared with me what, uh, the committee's recommendations were gonna be. I, I agree with the recommendations, um, I appreciate all the work that they did. While, while I understand Lori's concerns about VPA, and I will say, I'm a lifelong artist myself too, the thing that's most important is I actually think the more flexibility in this schedule, the better. And so the idea of increasing another requirement while you're decreasing something else, I think is counterproductive. And so I, I, I think you're, you're allowing more students opportunities to take more classes, which I think is great. There is the challenge with what the MGL says. Yes, there are other districts who have made different choices. I, I, I don't know of any that are necessarily happy with the choices that they've made specifically. And I know, um, Dan talked about two different districts that kind of changed their courses on it. And so I think the fact that, you know, we're working towards trying to provide flexibility, I think is, um, is important. The idea of the timeline of it in terms of the recommendations, provided that it was, depending on what the school committee would decide to do with the, with the policy, I think it, I think it makes sense. I think if we could do it sooner, it would be better. But I understand the impact that it could have on incoming students. And by all means, every time we do make adjustments, we've always targeted an incoming class as opposed to changing course midstream for students. So I think that that's important, whether it would be something that we could do sooner than later, I would love to continue exploring. But I, I, I respect and understand, um, the concern that that could have on both freshmen and sophomores and the ability to kind of make sure, because they're also just trying to unpack the new standards in the first place this year, and to figure out what does that actually look like, so that it can be meaningful and not just reactive.
And I think that was, uh, Mr. Rourke's, um, request or recommendation, is to give some time to really unpack it and, and redevelop what that combined program would be, so.
So I think I'm, I think what I'm hearing and, and suggesting, I guess, is that what's really on, on us would be a change in policy.
Right.
So there's no action we need to take tonight. We would, um, we can discuss this again and then a, and also start a draft policy.
Right, like, yeah, maybe in our discussion, bring our current policy and kind of review it as a group.
Yeah, look to see what changes would be.
Yeah, and because I think it would make sense, kind of like what we've done already is, rather than us taking so much and kind of potentially spending hours, I mean, it's, it, there's seven of us, so. So maybe we kind of plan an evening, a meeting where we're looking at that, reviewing the policy together and kind of.
And this is obviously a big piece of that input, but.
And I think the CD piece is something that we need to-
That's what I'm trying to come to, yeah.
We honestly might have more information this Wednesday, but I think it's gonna be more like after the new year, that we're gonna have a little bit more, um, guidance as to what we just need to include, so that it can all be done at the same time.
Exactly.
You don't want to do the same policy twice in one year.
Right, no.
And I, I also think that it is important to relook at the policy anyway, because I believe we identified a couple of things that are out of-
Yeah.
Sure.
Out of lack of what's actually-
Yeah.
Happening right now anyway, so.
So this is something that potentially we could be touching in the spring, but may not even get voted on or finalized till the fall kind of thing, or?
I think it, I think you'd probably want to end of the year.
It would be sooner than that, I mean, we, we need to, we need to-
The CD would be.
We need to move, yeah, we need to, we need to make sure that everything is also with CD before graduation.
I think we should just move in the policy subcommittee and.
There's a lot of months left. Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. We might call you back at a future meeting.
I'm anticipating it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we are a little far off schedule.
I just noticed, I'm like, oh.
I knew we said we were putting this, we're like, yeah, we can have these things, but I never really thought in the midst of budget discussion that the budget would actually be the, the thing that we talked about the least.
All right, well, we'll see how we do. Both, I just want to continue to remind the committee and anyone watching that topic, the graduation requirements, as well as what we're about to transition into for start times. It's just the beginning of these conversations. There is gonna be no action tonight on that or on start times. We understand that these are things that we want to allow a lot of public comment for. We are accessible by email, um, and they are changes for the community, so there is gonna be no quick, um, decision on these. We want to take our time and discuss them and revisit them, so. With that said, uh, we welcome the School Start Time Subcommittee, chaired by Bill McDonald and, uh, a ti- a part of by Catherine Clear.
Yes, I'm just actually checking, we may have a former member.
Former school committee emerita, emeritus.
If it's okay with the group, we'd like to, um, allow Chris Andrews to come and join, just because he was involved in so much of the initial start time and, uh, conversations and, um, was really the expert on all the software. So if anyone has questions, Chris is.
Was airtable involved in these discussions?
Go ahead, Bill, take it away.
All right, um, so, uh, our work as a subcommittee began, um, at the start of school year twenty-three, twenty-four. We have had seven meetings this fall, ranging from forty-five minutes to an hour and a half. It picked up, uh, quite a bit with, uh, multiple stakeholders and discussion members. Obviously, we have a, a number of places where this work, uh, is tied to both our strategic district improvement plan as well as the school committee goals for this school year, in our hopes to assess our organizational structures, uh, to ensure equitable learning environments for our students, all of our students. We made it an objective to determine options, uh, to best support healthy school start times. We have prioritized our mental health and wellness for all of our students and staff, um, and looking at, uh, releasing some of those pressure valves, um, related to academic and or social emotional performance that could negatively impact performance. And again, our, our, um, I don't know why it's a little off there.
Yeah, I know, we've cut it off for whatever reason.
You know, that, that we would, uh, hold ourselves to presenting a recommendation this fall. So, early winter, late fall, uh, we're here. Um, and that includes stakeholder outreach, and we'll talk about later, um, some of the, uh, ensuing timelines. So, um, again, previous work of, uh, subcommittees and citizens passed. In twenty nineteen, we had a ci- citizen advisory committee comprised of students, parents, and staff members that examined a range of factors. Their survey yielded thousands of responses across students, parents, other residents. And their ideal s- school start times that they recommended were between eight and eight thirty, but expected transportation costs did not allow any significant changes. In twenty twenty-one, a four-tier model, uh, was proposed, uh, but that was not implemented. We're gonna keep coming back around to this, uh, the transportation factor, because this is a big piece, uh, to this recommendation. You know, we understand, uh, that we're basing this recommendation in evidence that later start times would lead to an overall gain in total sleep, uh, for our adolescent students, which could help improve, uh, those students' social emotional wellness, as well as their academic and extracurricular outcomes. We can look at the American Psychological Association, the CDC National Youth Risk Behavior Survey, the Journal of Pediatrics, the Journal of Sleep, the Journal of School Health, uh, the list goes on. Furthermore, we understand that no implementation of later school start times can happen if the change adds significant expense to the school town budget, uh, through increased transportation, staffing, or systems costs. The district contracted with the company TransFinder, uh, and, uh, we had a staff trained up on their software and utilized their support to evaluate a number of scenarios, uh, through our efficiency study, which is part of tonight's packet. And you can also review previous update presentations that the subcommittee made on February twelfth and June seventeenth of this, uh, calendar year, um, if you go back to previous agenda packets. Next slide, there you go. So our work over the last few months included a number of participants. Included Jennifer Piper, who is the, uh, Transportation Director of Western Public Schools. Included personnel from TransFinder. Our contracted transportation vendor, D Bus Company, uh, included, uh, Western Public Schools Administration. Dr. Chu was in on almost every meeting. We had Principal Dan Tumi, uh, Athletics Director Jeff Bunyan. So we, we had a number of discussions. In our initial meetings, we brainstormed several scenarios, which included shifting from the current three-tier model of transportation to an additional two-tier model. That was mentioned in the June seventeenth update. We used TransFinder, uh, and their software to scrutinize these scenarios and their timeframes. It, it projects the routes, it projects, uh, route maps, um, the amount of buses required. And we really came to the outcome that, um, a two-tier model, uh, where we consolidated grades three to five and K to two in some combination into, uh, what we call a wave or a tier, was gonna provide enough of a gap for transportation to run and to achieve later start times for Westford Academy and our middle schools. Based on the distance between schools, uh, we cannot reasonably combine the routes of the Miller and Day Schools. So that is a, that is a, um, finding that we kind of came to in these discussions and through the, uh, you know, the numbers per se. But, you know, in this proposal that we would be combining, uh, the Robinson and Christopher Foley schools, as well as the Nabnasset and Abbott- as well as the Nab Nasset and Abbott schools, so like our.
Bus routes.
Bus routes, bus routes, yes. Yes, for the public to hear that. We're not combining schools, we're combining their bus routes. And so, you know, sister schools, right? So, you know, Nab Nasset goes up to Abbott. Robinson goes up to Christopher Foley. Miller goes up to Day. And that's, again, in order to remain efficient, we understand the budget costs here. And, you know, with discussion with D Bus, they have that unique knowledge of the local pre-established routes and some of those average ride times which we'll talk about. And so we really came to one viable scenario that we looked at, so.
It's, and, and just to point out, there was only one.
There was only one.
It's not like we were able to, like any of the other scenarios that we looked at, even like five, ten minutes later would require more buses, so therefore more costs, so they just weren't viable and based on our parameters. So this was the only viable one that we could dig into.
So the next.
Seven total?
We, eight, I believe. Well, one counting the current situation, which just gives us the baseline. And that's seven additional scenarios. So from that, we pulled one.
So we would, we got the initial draft, we looked at the initial first few scenarios, we discussed them, look at what they were coming up, and then we go back with TransFinder and say, can you redo this scenario with these parameters and stuff? So we went back three or four times to have them look at other scenarios.
And the other ones weren't an option because they were cost prohibitive?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you were, you were talking potentially upwards of ten or twenty more buses needed for some of these. So it just wasn't even in the picture, fiscal situation. So wanted to include this, this slide. These are our current school start times and end times and early release times in showing those three tiers of transportation that we utilize. So we have our Westford Academy and our Blanchard and Stony Brook Middle Schools, starting at seven-thirty-five, ending at one-fifty-five. That is a six-hour and twenty-minute school day. That meets with one hundred eighty school days, the nine hundred ninety-hour structured learning time requirement set by the mass regulations. Their early release time is at eleven o'clock. Tier two, our three to fives, Day, Christopher Lee, and Abbott, start at eight-twenty-five, they end at two-thirty, and their early releases at eleven-forty. You'll, you'll see that for both our three to fives and our K to twos, that their school day currently is six hours and five minutes. And, and across those one hundred eighty school days, including early release, that that meets their nine hundred hour structured learning time requirement. So Westford Academy, talking with Mr. Toomey and others, right now, they currently run a late bus on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays at three o'clock. And according to Mr. Bunyan, the teams that depart Westford Academy for athletics, away competitions, meets, and games typically between two-fifteen and two-thirty-five. So, you know, students don't have a lot of time. You know, they have to do their check-ins, they might have advisors. They got to get to their locker room, get their, gather their items, and some of them are leaving twenty minutes after school end right now, so. Now, in this proposed scenario, this one scenario that we're talking about, we are shifting now to two tiers. And again, we are combining the bus routes of Nab Nasset and Abbott and Robinson and Christopher Lee, all right? In this proposed scenario, we shift Westford Academy and Blanchard and Stony Brook to an eight o'clock start time, which is twenty-five minutes ahead. Keep the six-hour and twenty-minute school day, so they end at two-twenty. And our early release is at eleven-twenty-five, and if we do the math, that's a three-hour and twenty-five-minute day on early release days. Now, under the two-tier schedule, you know, in the ideal world, all those schools would start at eight-fifty, but we're combining bus routes. So we have kindergarteners, potentially fifth graders on the same bus, and they're in two different schools. So we're going to, we would propose two drop-offs for those combined bus routes. The first at the three to fives, so at Abbott and Christopher Lee, they would be dropped off at eight-fifty. And we give a twenty-minute buffer for buses to travel between school sites. We want to recognize that parents may be dropping off at both school sites. You know, siblings may be at Abbott, and then they got to get over to Nab Nasset or vice versa. We also recognize in this twenty-minute gap, the geographic distance between Miller and Day. So they retain their six-hour and five-minute days and their early release times as well. Three hours and fifteen-minute early release days for our three to fives and K to twos. And you'll see now that there is, there is, there is a gap. There's a fifty-minute gap between when Westford Academy and Blanchard-Stony Brook start to when Day, Christopher Lee, and Abbott start. So in this scenario, we're also shifting the three to fives up by twenty-five minutes, if you can, if you look at that math. Again.
And one of the things that, when we came on this, we did say how it did set us up in a good position that if and when we redistrict, because I know that conversation is kind of out there as we, who are building feasibility plans, that we've kind of already put that transition into place to collapse that properly in terms of timing. Because we're, you know, some of the scenarios previously had been, well, we have the three to fives go first and then, you know, middle school and then. And it was really important, we felt, to keep those two, the K through fives together as close as possible for the possibility that they will eventually redistrict and so that we could have one start time.
And reconfigure.
Reconfigure, so that we could have one start time, that they could all start at nine o'clock or whatever, so. And this is a stepping stone to that.
Um, you know, go back.
Sorry, go back, sorry.
So, you know, we know that, that twenty-minute gap, you know, is, that's something that stuck out to us when we talked about this. But again, thinking that families may have to travel between two sister school sites. You know, we also, you know, we want to reflect that it would be up to school administrations to, to be strategic about how they allow students to be dropped off and picked up at the end of the day. And, I mean, for instance, Robinson and Christopher Lee are, feel like a stone's throw away, but Day and Miller are not, right? So there are, there are going to be some differences here, but it's going to be up to leadership teams in this scenario to, to determine how they structure that, so. Of note here, again, looking at the current late bus and athletics departures for away sites, away games and competitions. That shift now, that twenty-five-minute shift for a late bus at Westford Academy on those days would be about three-twenty-five. And for athletics departure, about two-forty to three o'clock. If Jeff Bunyan had it his way, would be closest to two-forty. And I, I think we've talked about, you know, from Maddie's comments here, right? The late nights, the competitions getting in, you know, Director Bunyan talked about return times anywhere from six o'clock to nine o'clock on an evening right now for, for our student athletes.
But I think one of the data points on that, though, is that we're already potentially waiting around.
Yes.
Some, because a lot of the districts in those leagues that we play in have moved to a later start time, they can't start the games any earlier. So we're alre, we already have time available to us to kind of, to play around with essentially.
In, in previous presentations, if you go back to February and June, you will see some of those DCL and kind of Market Basket districts, you know, our local adjacent districts, where the majority of them have pushed their start times, their high school start times up. So, you know, what, what we did in a lot of discussions, we had D Bus there. Renee D was very kind to provide her time and she's very mindful. We, we were scheduling some of these meetings at four o'clock as she was being pulled in for runs as a bus driver herself. But we were looking at some of these maps, looking at some of these combined routes and, and the numbers, you know, and, and the numbers that TransFinder would pull, the numbers that, that D Bus would estimate and, and where capacity is. So in this example, this is the bus nineteen route for both Christopher Lee and Robinson. But now, if we're looking at a combined route, you know, there's some additional stops in there. It's around the same timeframe. Currently, the earliest pickup for the Robinson School is at eight, excuse, let me, let me go in reverse. The earliest pickup for the Christopher Lee School is at seven-forty-five, and their drop-off is at eight-fifteen. The earliest pickup for the Robinson School is at eight-twenty-five, and their drop-off is at eight-fifty-five. So if you look at that, that ride time, it's about a half an hour for Christopher Lee and about twenty-five to thirty minutes for Robinson. Their dismissal for Christopher Lee is at two-thirty, and, and buses are generally going between two-thirty-five and two-forty. For Robinson, their dismissal is at three-ten. Their buses are typically going between three-ten and three-twenty. And so the route times for those students are about fifteen to thirty-five minutes at Christopher Lee and about twenty to thirty-five minutes at Robinson, the longest rides being about thirty-five minutes right now.
And bearing in mind, we do have some outliers in the district that just with pure location are already on a forty-five, fifty-minute. Those buses would run differently. They wouldn't be now going to like an hour and twenty minutes. They just run kind of separately. So when we're saying, when we're talking about the average time, we do want to acknowledge there are some routes that are already longer than that, but they're kind of the outliers.
You'll notice down in D Bus's projections of combined routes here, that they currently list current riders. And then they're, what they're doing here is if they were forecasting for next year per se, taking away, you know, registered passes of our fifth graders, because, you know, conceivably, they're moving up to Blanchard or Stony Brook, but that's also not equating the kindergartners that would replace them, right? So, you know, we're, we're kind of ballparking in that number. You know, I, it, it's, it's the estimation that, yes, routes, bus, buses are going to go up in numbers by combining routes, right?
Well, they're not at capacity to begin with. I think that was really where the conversation started. We had essentially buses doing basically two loops, almost of the same bus route and weren't actually filling to capacity.
Correct.
And so, therefore, we do have capacity on those to kind of continue that bus route, but take all the students in and the one, on the one time.
Can we refresh your memories on the capacity for a full bus?
It depends on the size of bus. We have different ones.
There's buses with the nose, and then there's buses flat-faced, squished face.
And then it's whether it's two or three students to a seat.
Yep.
It's around that.
It can go from fifty to seven.
I was going to say, it's getting close to seventy.
It can go from about, you know, four, I mean, again, some of our smallest buses are probably running twenty to thirty students right now.
Yeah, they're the really small.
The really smallest, but I mean, like, average capacity would say like forty to seventy-two. But, you know, we typically find right now that our, our, our most packed buses are WA buses, are middle school buses, so. And again, bigger bodies on there as well.
On the bottom here, sixty-one dash twelve, why can't I make sense of that? What does that mean? What do you mean?
Sixty-one minus twelve.
So again, we're, like, so if, if D Bus is.
It's either forty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, Dee, Dee had put that together to just put their numbers on that as they shared that with them.
Who's the twelve?
The twelve was the.
Her and the fifth grader.
Fifth grader. So it's kind of what Bill was saying, is like, you're taking away the fifth graders, but they're not really including the kindergartners, so.
That may come on.
Might not necessarily be applicable.
So right now, if this bus ran, they're thinking there'd be sixty-one kids.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
It could be.
Yeah. And just so you know, like, in the packet, which we've added, Kathy very kindly figured out a way to do a zip folder. We've, we've included all of the very, very draft, drafted that D Bus have supplied with us, for us, so for anyone who wants to kind of just take a look, they could change. But it was really just to give us an idea on bus time, because that was also something really important to us, that we didn't basically double the, the ride time for our students on, on the buses. So we needed to kind of get a note on that.
Was any consideration made to the age of the students versus the length of the trip? Right? Because like a, a, a fifth grader is going to do a lot better on a longer trip than a first grader, right?
Correct.
So the, the trip's size, from what we can gather, based on what D Bus is showing us and, and some of it from TransFinder as well, is that the actual bus ride itself isn't, isn't, that length of time isn't really going to be impacted. What's, what's adding on to it is the stops. But actually, it's not for both of your stops a day. It would only be one of your journeys. So in the morning, everyone's getting on the bus and.
Different ages of students getting on at different times.
So it's a, it's the slightly longer bus journey in the morning for our K to two students, because they're being dropped last. But it's their shorter bus journey home in the afternoons, because they're being picked up last.
Yeah, the three to fives get picked up, and then the K to twos.
So it's not impacting both their bus journeys.
We just, we discussed about that, you know, this, this would be a shift for students and for parents to think about. Those kindergartners, the fifth graders on one bus, and what's developmentally appropriate, the older kids in the back, the kindergarten, the young ones in front, which is pretty standard, yeah. And.
And they do that, they do that anyway, unlike the K to two is case.
K to two, yeah, yeah.
Like, I think right now, if I understand from my kids, there was actually times that the bus would arrive at the school at some really early time because of how the schedule of the routes that that bus had to go back. So there was essentially extra transport time to then sit at the school. So it sounds like this might actually take some of that out.
Well, one of the things we did discuss, and I know in particular, it's come up at, at the high school, is that some of the buses are actually dropping off quite early at the high school. And so we discussed about, if we make the recommendation to do it, we could put in very clear parameters of buses can only drop off from this time and bus lengths can only be a certain, bus journeys can only be a certain length. So we can, we can set those kind of parameters of what we are, we would hope then for D Bus to achieve. So, because I'll be honest, some of it completely defeats the purpose of the high school if we've got students who are getting there forty to forty-five minutes before.
Almost two weeks ago, I, I was out at WA on Friday morning, the sixth, with Principal Toomey, and we watched the first buses arrive. Again, that first wave around six-forty-five, six-forty-seven?
Six, yeah, six-fifty-ish right there.
Six-fifty-ish, so, and then, so they're, they're dropping off students at WA, and then they're going back out and getting middle school students to bring them over to Blanchard by seven, by, yeah, by seven-thirty-five. So it's like two, two runs in that window. You know, then we see the students piling up outside the theater, piling into the cafeteria, you know, it, it just, you know, then you got the parents dropping off, it just.
And that defeats, that defeats the later start time, the, the extra sleep. If we're saying, you have to get up forty-five minutes earlier than you really actually need to to get to school, so.
And, and we've, and we've heard from parents who, who specifically drop their kids off darn near the, the start bell and choose to drive them in rather than ride the bus in order for them to collect that extra sleep, so. So there's just one more, if you go back up, back, Catherine.
This is a example of a combined route for Abbott and Nab. Just so happened to pick one that also is for Nab's students after fifth grade, fifth graders move up to the middle schools. But similar pickup, drop-off, and ride times for Abbott and Nab Nasset. Nab Nasset, interestingly, the, the traffic in the train continued to pop up a few times.
Yep.
Joyce is living in Westford.
You know, that, that longest ride typically about right now is thirty to thirty-five minutes, is what we've heard. And again, you know, the, the combining these routes are the, are, are the ones that we want to look at in terms of keeping down as much as possible, because we expect them to increase a bit with more students on. You just, you have more stops, more kids getting on, and a slightly longer ride time, so. Questions? So, you know, we, we had some other discussions, there were a lot of number, number of other things that, that peaked in here. You know, the, the grade three to five schools getting bumped up twenty-five more minutes. You know, conceivably, there's, there's, there would, should be some discussion about, you know, their early drop off options and, and what that might need to be organized to, to look at, just like our.
Even just to navigate the initial change, switch over to those, yeah.
You know, we, we had a very in-depth discussions both with the transportation company, D, as well as with Director Bunyan about athletics, about facilities and off-site rentals, about practice schedules, about transportation. We had some impassioned communications from student athletes and parents about those schedules, about facility availability, what would be the cascade and effects on that. All of this is, is being processed by the subcommittee and by others in the district. You know, bus registrations would have to be thought about here and about deadlines. Because the, the work that Jen Piper and her staff and, and D bus does to create these routes and adjust as the year goes on is, is remarkable. And, you know, of, of, what's that?
Just, just to put that into context, Jen is kind of saying that, asking us to consider moving. Currently, the bus registration deadline is July, I think, is it typically? At some point before you get into the, the later kind of fees and stuff. Jen is actually asking us to consider like a June first deadline because of, um, the nature of how long it takes to look at all the routes and the various bus stops. So even if we maybe don't recommend that we make that change to start time, maybe this is a separate change. We would also consider of moving that deadline just to give enough time and bandwidth to process all the registrations.
And, and also as Jen's getting trained up, you know, has been trained up on TransFinder, that we're going to utilize the software ongoing to, to consider the efficiencies we need to relative to transportation. So our timeframe and next steps now. You know, much like school committee process, we're going to have discussions about this proposal over the next several meetings. We are going to post a community survey to the district website and going to be communicated out to parents and students and staff through our building site, emails, weekly emails, in various means. We're going to collect those responses. We're going to communicate those. We're going to, you know, it's, it's going to be part of our, you know, our presentation of that data. Previous to this meeting, we, we met with WA Student Advisory Committee headed up by Maddie. And, and they're going to be conducting their own survey within Westford Academy to get response from the students. And we hope that goes up by Wednesday.
Yeah.
And keep that open through the break. One more thing to ask you, Mr. Toomey.
It's in my drafts.
So, so just to put context, the survey, Maddie started with the draft after we had an initial conversation. And then at our meeting tonight, we actually all sat down, myself, Larry and Bill, with the stack members and went back through that draft survey to kind of like finalize the type of questions and information. So there has been time and thought and effort from, from both parts, which is great because we really needed the youth to kind of rephrase stuff in a cooler, more acceptable.
Peel the, peel the high school. Yeah, we hope to have it out by Wednesday and it'll, it'll be open, I believe until January sixth where we'll reevaluate and see if we need to leave it open for more.
So Maddie had recommended when we were having the conversation in terms of, you know, what was a better time to potentially be asking the administration to be sending out this email or making it available on Google Classroom. And stack, the, the group of students had recommended actually toward, you know, later on in this week is, is probably a good time where they might have five or 10 minutes available to, to actually take the survey.
Like over vacation, it'll be good.
Can I imagine there, the increase in chatter, like you're building on that momentum of people talking about it right now and their initial reactions?
Yeah, there's, there's definitely conversations and I'm hoping that over break, when kids maybe or maybe not look at, glance at their emails and as, as they, you know, I'm, I'm assuming this won't be a, a fast gathering survey of responses. I assume it's going to be trickling in. And even past January sixth, I think we'll still people, unless we close it, obviously. But I think our, hopefully our, our key moments will be when we come back from winter break, when kids are opening up their laptops and looking through their emails. I'm hoping that even if, if we send up a possible follow-up email, but that's.
And can you maybe leverage some of your, your, like the grade level Instagram accounts and like push out reminders and stuff like that?
Yeah, on top of, so I was looking, and again, this will be in the email to Mr. Toomey. I'm hoping to put out a school-wide email as well as on class, school classrooms, kids get notifications of those. And even talking to some of like Stuko Student Senate and kind of hoping to, to, to put that on on social media too.
Ghostwriter.
The ghostwriter as well.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping we, we really tried to make it not really wordy and kind of easy to fill out.
Sure.
Not all the questions are required if they don't apply. So we're hoping that it, it should, it shouldn't take more than five minutes.
So this is just to take a second, this is to where we've kind of landed so far, you guys. Because if any of you feel like we're kind of missing something, the, the suggestion was we put the change in bold up at the top because the rest will probably not be read. And so this is kind of where we landed on terms of questions and trying to keep it as simple as possible. Do you think a later start time of ATM would be a positive change? Please elaborate. How do you get to school? Would you, would the way you get to school change? Because we're also trying to get an idea of would this actually increase or decrease bus ridership? So some of this is also for Jen Piper.
Because a later start time could result in less cars being available, less parents being available.
Potentially, yeah.
Or I would even argue more cars that you would have to accommodate for traffic. I mean, I don't know if any of you have ever seen the WA drop off. And I haven't seen the other schools in a while, but it can be madness. And so just the kind of the.
I imagine that's all schools will drop off though, let's, you know.
I see it everywhere.
It's, it's kind of a special, special problem.
Especially when you throw in driver's ed, just starting out.
Yeah, I've never seen anything like it.
Would the way you get to school change? If you answered yes to the previous question, which option below would work best for you? You take a bus, how long is your ride to school? Again, just trying to get an average idea. Would a two twenty PM finish time impact your afternoon commitments? Again, it's just trying to ascertain, you know, whether it's athletics, jobs, childcare.
Hoping to filter feedback into kind of definite responses versus just like a what do you think?
Yeah. And then obviously some longer form if people want to expand.
Can I ask you a question? You said, would a two twenty PM?
Finish time.
Finish time impact your afternoon commitments? And then the question is if you answered no to the previous.
Oh, that should be yes, actually, yeah.
I got it.
If they said no.
We did some edits and then we like walked out of the room and it was like, okay, we hope this is good. Thank you.
Good, change on the fly.
Perfect.
The other, I, and I think you've already done this. I think the, 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 the extra information, those aren't required answers, right?
Yeah, so some are and some aren't.
The red starred questions are required.
That's also sometimes I just know people don't want to give you more information. I'm like, if they ask me for more information on a survey, sometimes they're like, no, I'm done.
It's the writing part that kids like, and even.
I'll give you the yes or no quickly.
I'll admit the multiple choice is easier, especially if you're trying to get it done quick. And so that's kind of what we're hoping is while we might not get as more like word feedback, we'll hopefully get it.
Interestingly enough, I pulled, I had a look through the, I think was it the twenty nineteen survey? There was essays from students in some of those responses.
Some people do feel real passionate, so we did include that, but.
I think the option is great.
The option is great.
But if you have to, then sometimes we'll be like, I don't have time.
And I think what's, what is important for us to remember too is that while all this is really important information, we want to, we want to understand student life and that, the comings and goings and your commitments, what your day is like. But there's also the other side of the scale is the research, right? So even if a student, nobody kind of likes change forced upon them. But it doesn't mean that a survey means that this would kill, would kill the proposal either, right? So.
And that's why.
As teachers you're talking to.
Yeah, and, and that's also like, we didn't.
Sometimes you don't, you don't act in your best interests, right?
Yeah. And that's why we didn't put any questions in regarding, you know, would this impact your bedtime or sleep time or anything like that? Because I think it's, it's.
More like the logistics part of it.
The logistics of it, yeah.
And take this with a grain of salt, this won't be probably, probably will be filled out with parents, this will be a kid in free time, like, oh, let's do this. So while the, this is a semi-accurate response of, of, of a census at WA because this could be a kid that, that would be, well, of course I'm going to have to have my mom drive me. You know, like this, this is being filled out by kids who might not even know what it would look like, but we're hoping to get an idea.
And actually, I would hope that it is truly the students and not the students with the parents because the parents.
The parents are going to get their own.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. This is strictly for students. Don't fill it out with your parents.
Yeah. And, and also, it's also to kind of give the opportunity, because, I mean, we've, like we said, you know, we've thought about early drop off options and, and various different things. Is there something we haven't thought of that needs some sort of tweaking, accommodating, figuring out? So it's, that's also kind of if we do this, so there you go. I'll go back there to the slide.
So the other big piece is that we want to hold a district community forum and webinar. Cognizant of our school committee's schedule, our first meeting after the new year is on Monday, January sixth. The following one is Tuesday, January twenty-first, after the Martin Luther King Junior holiday. We want, we're targeting either that sixth, that late that week, meaning Wednesday or Thursday, or the following Monday or Tuesday. So potential dates we're looking at would be January eighth, ninth, thirteenth or fourteenth for that community forum. And so that would be a in-person option here at Millennium or a webinar online. And I expect it to be well-attended and it should be attended.
And it's, we're, obviously Dr. Chu is looking at your schedule potentially too.
Yeah, I honestly think that's aggressive.
Okay.
And I, I question whether you need to vote on February third, if you could, like, is February tenth is, you know, or even, or even just after the vacation? Like somewhere in that timeframe? I just think you need just a little bit more air because we also have all of the budget meetings.
Exactly, so this was if we still had to do the vote on February third.
Yeah.
But we're open to date shift.
I think that timeline, I think is, I think it's, we want to be in that window because I think if there's, if there's any change, the more time, the better for families. But I think, I would, I would say that you want to have the vote by the end of February. So it gives you the tenth, or even if for some reason something changes and you do it the first meeting at, let me look.
The reason we didn't pick the tenth was because it's, it's still a tentative meeting. I don't, I don't think we confirmed it as a meeting yet.
Oh, you're right. It does say tentative.
Yeah, so.
Because of the, because of the vacation week.
Yeah, so.
Good point.
We can.
There's only one meeting actually scheduled in February.
I know, it's really weird, yeah.
And the whole month of February.
And the whole month of February. And then there's three in April.
Wow.
So that would be my, I think, I would say, you know, maybe a little bit, a little bit more flexibility. But I didn't realize that the tenth wasn't a definite meeting.
I'm just to, I'm going to say out loud so that I don't forget, is that originally the meeting schedule was tied to the warrants. And now that we've separated those processes, the meeting schedule is completely up to us.
This could also, I'm just throwing it out there, be one of those topics that maybe it is outside of a business.
That's what they're saying, right? It's like a Thursday or a Tuesday.
So the webinar forum thing would be an official school committee meeting.
It would, I'm official that we would still post it in case there's deliberation, but outside of our meeting schedule?
So we weren't seeing it as deliberation for a forum and webinar. It was really just an opportunity for.
To hear.
To hear acts or questions.
Right, you would want, you would want the option for everyone to attend and react. Maybe not, we're internally deliberating, but to, yeah. I think we cover all our bases if we post.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we can maybe look at that timeline.
And, and also, you know, possibility with your approval, Dr. Chu, would be to gather some of the principals at every grade level and maybe bring them before the committee here just to get their opinions on this proposal.
I think we didn't say necessarily every grade level.
Yes.
We were kind of thinking potentially a three to five.
Yeah.
Potentially Jeff Bunyan, potentially Dan Toomey. If the school committee, the school committee felt they wanted to just ask Dan, Jeff, you know, one or two of the principals some clarifying questions or whatever. Because we've had the opportunity to, with the pleasure of their company. But, so again, that's kind of more having a good meeting.
Right, and, and when I saw that, I was thinking the sixth might be soon, the twenty-first, sure.
Yeah.
But the sixth, I'm like, hmm, that might not be enough notice.
Twenty-first, yeah.
Right after the break.
Yeah.
But the twenty-first, yeah.
This is all the first chat. I just want, like, everybody, we, we have time.
Yeah.
We will do this thoroughly and we will, you know, adjust as needed.
Yep.
So.
Just one quick question that just kind of came to me. Have you checked with DPW how, if this would have a significant positive impact on them for snow clearing? Like if an extra twenty-five minutes is really significant in, in a decision to, you know, have a delay start or.
Well, it, it, I mean, it does definitely give you a little bit more time.
Yeah.
I, it's a good question. I mean, we could ask Kyle, I, I think it's a, first a question I would ask Jeff, just to our internal process.
Because I know, isn't it sometimes we potentially end up doing, paying overtime because they, they, they're, depending on the timing of the storm and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, but the, but the idea is that, I mean, we just know as the temperature changes, sometimes it's easier to.
Yeah.
With some of those things that'll be right on the cusp, like if everything was just a little bit later.
Yeah.
If you have twenty-five extra minutes before you have to pick up that phone, right?
It might have made a difference, it might have even made a difference on the, on the, on the temperature too, but that's a good question.
Yeah.
I think in general, it's just a, I'm curious as to, you know, what, what impact the buses have on the traffic through Westford.
Yeah.
And so if that shifts, then, you know, what does that do?
Twenty-five minutes later in the center could be.
Right.
Really bad.
Right.
Potentially, so.
Any other initial questions or actions? Both of these topics are, need some marinating, some processing. So they will be on a future agenda coming to you. But I want to make sure that if there's anything specific, yeah.
One thing that we didn't spend much time on was cost, right? Is this, is this proposal budget new?
Yes, yes. So this is in line with the projections we just at about where we are right now based on the current buses that we're using, so.
Yeah, I get it. There might be slight differences. So that would be my initial thoughts of it as someone who lived through the last time that this was in front of the school committee is that we got to do our best, if this is a priority of our committee and this is as important as I believe us seven have talked about it, that our child, our children's and our students' emotional wellbeing and their ability to perform is really tied to the amount of sleep. But when school starts, then if it's as important as the research suggests, then we have to do our best to decouple it from any budgetary decisions. Because I think that that's something that got lost in the last time that this was around is that it was kind of connected to budgetary decisions. And, you know, the, the benefit of it got lost because it was being sold as something that could help the district financially as opposed to that it could help our students mentally, right?
And, and where we started the conversation was, you know, if we could achieve, you know, you know, a full like eight-thirty start time and everything would work perfectly and it would only potentially, you know, cost an extra bus or something, it's definitely worth considering. But we really started off kind of going, this has to be cost neutral. Or potentially save us money, but we're not doing it to save money initially, if, if we see benefits from that. And so the, the real focus on, on this was, is there a way to make this work and how does, how does it happen?
True.
And, and like we said, we can have everything we want if we wanted to do the, the perfect, you know.
Single tier, a single tier.
Everybody goes to school the same time.
And I, I think, was it sixty-nine buses or something came in?
Fifty, every hit a bus.
It was definitely in the high fifties.
There was, there was some high numbers there, so, yeah.
Sorry, we're a little over, so take your time to, yeah.
Could I just also point out, I know we talk about social emotional wellbeing of our students and how it's one of our goals and our, our S TIP goals and stuff. I think it's also important to note that I don't think we think that this is the magic, you know, solution that, like, it really is only a cog in the wheel of multiple things that can, that can help improve the, the social emotional wellbeing of our students. So, you know, bear in mind that we're not presenting this thinking that all of a sudden, you know, we're going to have a full, you know, twenty-five extra minutes of sleep and, you know, things are going to make a massive difference. But it's another tool in our toolbox, you know, in or, as part of our S TIP. Because there's, there's other things that we're looking at, so it's just another option that we have. Because there's, there's other, um, things that we're looking at, um, so it's just another option that we have.
Doesn't have to solve every problem out there.
Exactly.
I know a lot of kids were like, oh, I could eat breakfast, or I know, like, I know a couple of people like to go to the gym early in the morning, and it's just that extra, like, it's not necessarily about the sleep, I guess, for some people.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just that time to, like, wake up versus waking up and having to start school, like, hit the ground running.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's just a nice, like, easing into the day.
Yeah. Okay, um, huge thanks, because you guys have been doing the work of, of full subcommittee, and you've been down to just the two of you all fall.
Thank you.
Someone who shall remain nameless, you know.
I really, I really do appreciate it. I know it's been a heavy lift and a lot of time, so thank you.
Worth it.
And now it's up to the, the full committee, so. Um, for tonight, we are going to move on to budget discussions. We, so if you're just tuning in, um, Dr. Chu presented his budget proposal last Monday night. That's a bit of a crunched schedule for us, um, to have that seven-day turnaround. Uh, but we added this meeting just to make sure that we have a touch point on some initial reactions, concerns, um, or discussions. So the committee has had a chance to submit some initial questions, and we can have as, have the discussion you wish to have tonight, but it will be added on the January sixth meeting as well and the, oh my god, I'm blinking.
Twenty-first.
Thank you. So.
Tentatively still planning to vote on the twenty-first.
Right.
Public hearing will be on the sixth, um, so whatever discussion we don't have tonight, we still have plenty of time to talk on the sixth. We'll have a public hearing on the sixth, and then the vote wouldn't be until the twenty-first. So I appreciate the questions that you, you've asked already, and we've, I sent you responses to those. All of that'll be compiled as well, so that we can kinda, some questions might lead to other questions and things like that.
Right, I just wanna take that moment to reiterate to the committee that I will, I will follow up with an email, but, um, that was not the deadline for questions, because I realized that that was a short turnaround. So I was thinking, committee questions hard stop would be January third. Did I say January third? Right. It's in advance of our next meeting on the sixth. So if you didn't get one in, or if you think of more as we're talking tonight, there's another chance.
Knowing that if you do give us a question on January third, it might not be answered on January sixth, because that is a Friday, and we might not answer it.
Right.
Yeah, but still, that.
But at least you know of it.
We know, yeah, yeah.
Yes, right. It's the, it's the sharing.
Yeah, do you want me to put up the slides or anything from?
No.
Just like.
Nope.
Yeah, I didn't create a new slideshow. I didn't add to the deck, because honestly, there wasn't, I mean, I think some, there are some questions, people like, oh, you know, asking
PTSD from last.
some different thoughts about things, but nothing that was like, hey, we need another, we need additional information presented to us.
Yep. So if you submitted something that you'd like to expand into a discussion tonight, um, feel free to raise that.
Yeah, and we, and Jenny and Gerard are both with us. I forgot to introduce them last time earlier, but they're both with us, they're both with us already.
Do you wanna have them up or?
If you wanna come and sit at the table, I don't know what, if we go through any of the questions, or we might not. It is nine fifteen, and I think there's still another agenda item, so. The fact that we still have time and you've been asking the questions, we are certainly not insulted if you don't wanna discuss any of them this evening, because we have provided answers to all of them.
Right, yeah.
That I think you might wanna look at or not. That's okay.
I, I think I'd just kind of, you know, say, and I, I know I wanna go back and have a look at, at some of that information you provided. Um, I think, you know, it would be worthwhile that maybe, because I'll, I'll be honest, the, the, the point or the question I have, which I, I raised before, was, um, looking at our intervention model, um, I, I would really appreciate if maybe we could have a bit more clarity on how we think that looks like, and, and I appreciate you were sharing that based on the DIBELS, um, data. Um, you know, it's somewhat, it is improving, but I, I think, you know, as I had, um, raised before, the DIBELS really only looks at reading and comprehension at a sentence level. And whereas the MCAS looks at, um, a bit more comprehensive on the literacy skills in general, including writing. And so, um, and I know this is a question that came a year ago when we were having this conversation, too, and it's still something that, um, I would appreciate a bit more insight into, and even understanding, you know, at the middle school, what are, what is that, where is the intervention available? Because I know we got rid of the reading, um, kind of elective, I think it was called, um, at the middle schools, which seemed to really kind of focus on creating those kind of foundational, you know, filling the foundational literacy gaps for our students who aren't in special education, who kind of receive that, those services, too. So, um, it's something that I, I would maybe appreciate that we could have a conversation about, not necessarily tonight, you know, in, in January, um, to kind of have a, a closer look at what that looks like, um, because I, I appreciate, we've got UFLY and, um, the EL curriculum happening at the, um, elementary schools, and based on everything I'm seeing, it, it looks great, and we know that hopefully, those classes, we're starting to see that data come through, those, those classes will, um, who are getting that, um, early foundational literacy, um, skills, um, it will hopefully kind of transition as they go up, but I suppose I still feel like there's a bubble of, I don't know, is it kind of the fourth to sixth graders or third to sixth graders, based on the MCAS scores, that, um, you kind of question how much, um, have, did COVID, I suppose, impact their, um, early literacy and kind of foundational reading skills at the time, and if, if we need to continue to support them for another year or two. Or the other question is, is there another reason aside from COVID that the MCAS scores are declining? So I think that's just something I would appreciate, um, a bit more of a conversation about in, in January at some point, if that would be okay.
I, I think I'm, that's one of the topics I would like a little bit more analysis of.
Yeah.
You know, I understand that the coverage in the building will be the same hours, but how many per building are gonna be available, what, what group sizes might be?
Math versus literacy.
Having, just having that understanding of, because it, it's kind of a new model that's being proposed and just how it compares. That, that would help me quite a bit. Uh, and then the other thing is just, you know, around class sizes. You know, I, I am concerned about, and I know it's budgetary, but I'm concerned about those numbers creeping, and at what point do we not accept that creep? And, um, you know, at what point is it that one school is significantly different than, than others? Because I, I think that has an impact not only on the students, but on the, the teachers, too, that, you know, they're, you know, in the same salary scale, but teaching more kids, you know, so.
When you say that difference, I, I assume you're referring to Abbott, because it's a smaller, it's a physically smaller classroom. Okay.
Right, uh, but even still, you know, e- even with the physical limitations, that I, I think it's well-documented, there's still, you know, twenty-two versus twenty-five, it, it can be significant.
It can. One of the, one of the things I think, and I agree with you, I, I agree with that concern. The, the issue also is that it, like I said, we said in the last meeting, we have class sizes of twenty-four and twenty-five right now. And next year, if these sections remained the same, there would still be classes of twenty-four and twenty-five, and then twenty-threes and twenty-fours in other buildings. So it's not just happening in one spot.
Yeah. Um, but the tw- the, what, what came to our attention was the potential for a twenty-five in one spot.
And, and it, like I said, it's the same thing that happened this year, and even last year, we actually had that scenario with our first graders, um, at Robinson as well. So it's not ideal, but it's, it's also not something that we haven't had to actually deal with in the past as well, too.
But it also raises the question of, what's the trigger mark? Because, yes, you might end up with a class with an extra student or two, but what is that number that really says we hire a whole teacher and start a, a whole other classroom? And, and, and so I, I appreciate that. As, as a former teacher, I get it. Um, you know, just throwing it out there, and maybe it's something for longer term, um, I had worked in a previous district, actually as a TA at the time, and they had a kind of a policy, rather than, um, increasing and hiring teachers, they would hire, um, um, we were, it was a TA, was the position, um, or an ESP, um, who would work with the classes. So even though, so they knew they were going kind of slightly higher in class size numbers, so they specifically hired, um, a TA to give supporting hours specifically to the teacher. So they weren't necessarily there for a one-to-one with the student, and, and so maybe that's something, if we're kind of navigating these class sizes and our budgetary issues, that, um, because I am conscious about our, our, our teachers ending up in maybe having slightly bigger class sizes, that there's other ways to alleviate it without hiring an, another teacher and starting a class, another section, exactly.
Section, right. Just, just something for open discussion, basically, because it was raised as.
It's a, it, it all is a, it's a give and take, right? Because, I mean, one of the things that we could do is, wh- what we originally looked at was reducing the interventionists to twelve, so that there were two at every single building, and not having fifteen, not having those three that would allow us the flexibility. Those three could be, could, could, we could rethink that, and, and we could look at hiring ESPs to support classrooms. That's certainly something that we could look at. I think having a specific trigger, as you will, right? That's one of the reasons why you don't have a policy that says the class sizes will be X.
Have to be X.
That's why the school committee hasn't done that, because there are, there's different context in each scenario, right? And so it's more about.
It may only be a blip one year.
That's right.
It may not be a, yeah.
So, but I think it's something, it's something to look at. I did talk to the principals and let them know that, you know, certainly if we did have significant numbers of students or that, that moved in outside of what we've seen, we would look at that, and we would look to see whether it was necessary. But it's like also with the number of sections, when they're down to only having four sections, then the additional section makes quite the difference, right? So all of a sudden, you then go from having twenty-threes and twenty-fours down to eighteen and nineteenth.
Right.
And so while that's great for that section, now you're like, okay, now we've just done this one thing and created this scenario where everybody else is still sitting with twenty-threes.
Right.
And that is where I'm like, it's, it's not ideal, and I, and I hear it, and I understand when we talk about the, the pressure that puts on parents. It is what we said was going to happen when we didn't have the, the strong, stable funding that we said that we need in our schools. We said that it was gonna impact our class sizes, and while they haven't jumped as high as we feared they might, this might become the, the new norm for a while, and that's something that we have to look at until we're able to reassess what that funding source is.
And I, I think feedback we've gotten, and I think you might have seen this in the, kind of some of the initial data with the equity audit, was the class size, the small class size, was something that was really valued in, in our community, so, um, it's, yeah.
But like to, I, I, I hear it. It's just to that point of like, well, what do you give, what do you take to, to give that?
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, we, yeah. Go ahead, Lori.
So I have a question about, um, the criteria for students receiving intervention this year, and I was wondering if that had changed at all this year as opposed to last year or the previous year, and if anyone knows.
Yes.
Going into the year.
We did, we did reevaluate that. You wanna speak to that?
Sure.
Yep, thank you.
So with our MTSS model, we really took a close look at how many students were qualifying. Really, when you have a strong tier-one level of support, you're looking at, um, very strong evidence-based curriculum. Um, you're looking at, uh, teachers who are able to differentiate and strong professional development along with universal screeners. And so we look at those universal screeners to tell us which students, um, will require services in the tier-two or tier-three. Last week, when we were here, we embedded a document that was in one of the slides. There was a link in there that was around the MTSS model, um, proposal, and that really kind of drills down how we're looking at the students', um, scores. And so we have changed in that, in the past, we were just looking at the scores, kind of like, who were the lowest, you know, twenty scores per grade level that might get intervention?
There was a time when it was also per class, right?
Right, right.
Like, there was a time when it was just whoever the lowest, so many students in the class were there, which, we were like, well, wait a second, that doesn't necessarily make sense.
Now we're really looking at the percentile ranks and find, and looking at the DIBELS and at the eye-ready data. Who's showing up in that yellow in, um, in red area? Who's at risk? Who's at some risk to determine whether further screening needs to take place or whether intervention will be provided? And so when we changed that criteria, then we had a different amount of students that were qualifying for intervention. And so in that document that's embedded into the slideshow, you'll see that two hundred and four of our elementary students are receiving some type of intervention, whether that's from the math interventionist, the reading interventionist, or the literacy specialist. Another big challenge that we have is that we don't want students to be removed from the tier-one level of instruction. And when we look at the amount of time that both the EL curriculum and the everyday math curriculum demands of our students, you look around to find what is the available time to actually pull for those interventions, and that is limited as well. Um, that is what has caused us this year to do a combination of push-in service and also still working with the small groups. But what we really wanted to maintain is to make sure that any student that was being pulled into a small group was doing so because they were showing deficiencies in those areas that the universal screener was talking about. Something to celebrate is that the scores are telling us that about ninety percent of our students are doing well in that tier-one. And so that is a huge head nod to the classroom teachers, into the, into the curriculum that has been brought to the district, and the professional development that has been happening for the past several years.
Thank you. Um, so I'm wondering, too, then previous years, like, say, last year or the year before, what is the comparison between the kids who received intervention and what they're, and the, and the kids receiving it? Like, how many more kids were there in general?
Right, and so I did see that question, right, and tried to drill that down. When I gave the snapshot, uh, last week of those two hundred and four students, we were looking at that moment in time for the purposes of budget, knowing we were gonna try to say, hey, this is what we're servicing right now for students. Um, and this is what we are predicting that we're gonna need moving forward. We don't have, we did not collect data such as that at every step of the way in previous years. One hundred percent, we have data on every single one of our students that were serviced, but the.
Aggregate.
The timing of it is just different as well, because students go in.
Change throughout the year.
Yeah, in and out of services. And so that snapshot, I can't go back and say, okay, in December of, you know, twenty-twenty-three, what was, what was that number? What did that number look like?
Right, is your general sense that there were more students receiving intervention in the past than this?
We were pulling students for intervention services who did not qualify for the intervention services. And so, yes.
They must have benefited from the intervention. In other words, they weren't severely needing the intervention, but they still benefited, correct?
You know, whether they would benefit from that or benefit from being part of the gen ed curriculum, you know, it, it's hard to tell. There were some, what we wanna do is to make sure that, uh, the interventions that we're providing within literacy and numeracy is very targeted, very specific, evidence-based around those two academic areas. What we found is that some students might have been pulled out for work completion, but they weren't showing any kind of deficit in the literacy or the numeracy. And so, you know.
So maybe a social, emotional reason even, that they were having a tough time at school?
It could have been accommodated in a different way, right, other than what the literacy and numeracy in, um, the RIs and MIs were hired to do.
I have a quick, quick question, sorry. You, you were saying it was like a national norm percentile?
So there aren't hard percentages that you're gonna find. Like, there's a lot of variability that each district can make up their own mind. But these are the norms that you would normally find, you know, eighty to eighty-five percent of your students doing well in your tier-one. That you would, that tier-two would be, you know, between ten percent and fifteen percent of students, and that tier-three might be a five percent.
So it's not that we're comparing our Westford Elementary students to a different state?
We are using the universal screeners to see how our students are, are, um. We are using the universal screeners to see how our students are achieving within those standards of the screener. So it's not in comparison with any other community to say, you're going to get services and you're not. But it's more that it's, it's measuring their own skill.
Okay.
Into the standard, the individual to the standard.
I think what, a super-high-level summary of what I'm, what I'm hearing, some concerns about, like, that, an acknowledgement that the, 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 I don't know, what's the word? Like, the, the wherever the line in the sand is to determine that.
Qualifying.
Yeah, thank you.
Criteria.
The criteria has changed. And we, we talked about it last year, right, as part of the budget, when this was proposed to be a reduction. And then was extended for FY twenty-five with the, a town meeting amendment. But we did talk about that, formalizing the criteria, that that was a weakness, sort of, that that was an opportunity to to strengthen that. And what I'm hearing, I guess, is that this is the level that the current funding supports.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that, I I do think it's, it's a combination of two things. It's us looking at, okay, what should the criteria be based on, when you're looking at how students should be receiving intervention? And when we reset that and said, okay, now let's look at what this, what this really should be. Not who do we have time to support necessarily, but what does the da- who does the data say we should be supporting?
Okay.
The numbers changed.
Yeah, so it's.
And so I think to Lori's point, like.
Dual for you.
Are there students who are benefiting from it? Absolutely. Did the data say that they needed it? No. And we were supporting students who the data didn't necessarily say that they needed it. So when we're looking at our services and we're looking at efficiencies, we need to say, is that something that we should continue to be doing, or should we rethink how we're doing it? And so when we look at, let the data drive the conversation, now we're saying, okay, now we're seeing that there's fewer students who are needing this based on this information. And it is based on the the definition of where that criteria is, whether, and it's kind of what we had talked about before, whether it was a hard stop at twenty percentile, was it going up to forty percentile? And is that something that really warrants that level of intervention? Or is that something that could be supported in another way? And, and that's, that's, and it kind of goes to what you're saying, Tom, too. Like, it's not really a new model as much as, in terms of we're still, what the data is telling us that, yes, we need interventionists, right? We need the interventions, we need to be able to support our students. What it's saying is that this is, this is how we think we can best do it. And we do think that this number of individuals would be able to support the need that we're seeing.
Okay.
So I think the, the challenge is that previously, you know, say the number was twenty percent. The kids that were in the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three percent that are now not serviced, were getting it and were really benefiting. So just, you know, I I think in general, the people, the, the students that are really behind will get support. Ones that are really ahead will get pushed a little bit more. And the middle is always a challenge, right? To, to really optimize their education, I guess. So, so I think that, that's part of the.
We have a couple of safety nets that are built in, right? And so that we are using some secondary screeners, so that if somebody was falling, you know, more in that gray area, we could continue to drill down to say, does this student require services? Those individual decisions about, yes, you're going to have intervention or not, would take place in a database team, where you're, you have your professionals around the table. You're, you're looking at the data, but you're also looking at that individual student and what is going to make the most sense for that individual student. So, yes, we're using that universal screener as that guidepost, but is there some variability? Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to the point, I think, that Lori was getting at, that it's the value that has been lost, really, in these budget cuts.
There is, and I, and, I mean, the stories.
Acknowledge it.
Exactly, and the stories that people shared with us about the positive relationships that individuals, absolutely. There is no doubt about that. And that's why it's very difficult when we're talking about people, right? Because we have phenomenal staff members. We have people who care deeply about kids, and kids are connecting with different adults in the building. And so there's no doubt about that. When we looked at what the data is saying that we should be doing, we're saying, okay, there is another way that we, in which we can do that. And so we're still going to be making sure that people are building positive relationships with students. And, yes, to the ar- the arguments when there's more kids in the class that challenges that, absolutely, absolutely. Nobody is denying that. I believe that our staff is still able to do it. And, and we know that, you know, they're still putting students first, which I think is, which is, which is what's important. But, yes, most of these discussions that we're having are because we have to make difficult choices.
If there are students in that gray area, is it possible that without this intervention, they would need more special services in the future, like an IEP, five oh four, et cetera?
Well, students that qualify for an IEP are based on a disability. And so the lack of an intervention isn't necessarily going to qual, isn't going to create that disability. That's going to come out on some cognitive testing. So it certainly wouldn't be our hope that we would be taking away something only to build numbers in it, in the, in the diff, in a different direction with special education. That would be counterproductive. And we certainly don't want to send the message that in order for somebody to get support, you would need to qualify as having a disability. The state wouldn't want to see that piece at all. So that's why we want to maintain a strong intervention model. But we certainly want to be using those correct guideposts to say when those services need to be put in place. Tom, you had brought up group size a little bit. And at no point, or any of our intervention, you know, we, we wouldn't want to see them, the groups go higher than five. And I don't think they're at five right now. We, we still have bandwidth with the amount of interventionists that we were, you know, afforded this year. And so we definitely have wiggle room to be able to service our students.
Typically seeing two or three students in a group.
Courtney, can I ask just to clarify, because this is a question that, in a conversation that came up with a parent that I, I thought, my understanding with the intervention model as well, with the students who are going in and out, it's not something that's supposed to be long-term, is that correct? Like, the idea would be that if after a semester or or two, that that student isn't really making, I suppose, let's say, meaningful progress, is there not a ma, like, is there a process there in place where then they need to be going to administration to say, okay, at this point, we should be screening them for, to, to have a further look, to see if there's something more there that we're missing that potentially would qualify them for that tier-three intervention?
Right, absolutely. So there are data meetings that take place during, you know, at each level. There are also, when we talk about the universal screeners as taking place three times a year, in September and in January and in June. And so we would hope that there will be students that come off of that caseload. That's a celebration, right? We also know that as the curriculum moves forward and different concepts are being introduced, that students might show a deficiency in another area, and they might get picked up for short term. The part that we certainly want to avoid would be the scenario of a student that's been hanging out in interventions for three years. That's not what we want to be able to, we, you know, different decisions need to be made for that individual student if they are not responding correctly to the interventions that are being provided to them. What that might look like is being referred to an IST, possibly, you know, a special education evaluation at that point. And, and that would be the perfect scenario of giving that student the very best opportunity to succeed within the general ed curriculum before overly identifying somebody as, as having a disability.
Really, it looks like everybody's kind of tired.
Right.
I feel like the smartest thing here to do is to let everybody keep thinking, formulate more questions. We'll regroup on January sixth.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the answers tonight, the discussion tonight. And we will touch upon the policy agenda item.
Yes, and we'll keep this short. So the agenda originally had said that we were hoping to take a vote tonight, having had our policy up for, for public comment and feedback. And towards the end of, as we were closing our public comment period at the end of last week, we actually received some public feedback that really wasn't just kind of initially like that, some language tweaking or something. So policy had, we're always, we're scheduled to meet today anyway. And so we actually spent, and, and some of that public comment, actually, we had a member of the public join us for, for that policy meeting. And it really ended up in a, a full conversation of fleshing out some parts of the policy that require a little bit more of consideration and language. And so, you know, in the spirit of doing our due diligence and not rushing it and getting it right, because we know it's a very important policy in our district, that we felt we would like to pause that vote for tonight. Maybe have policy come back in January to actually kind of do a new kind of draft of it. And then bring it to school committee for that final vote. So it would, it wouldn't, we, we don't need to reset the clock in terms of having to do a, like, even if we redraft it, it's, it's, we can still come back and, and kind of put it up for a discussion and potentially vote in, in the same night. But we just felt with one or two particular things, it's, it's kind of required us to reach out and just get a bit more clarification on.
We need to do some research.
Just do a bit of extra research. When, when this policy came to us initially, it was just that we had to update some of the language. And obviously, you know, when you put it up for public comments, it sparks more conversation and so.
Which is great.
Which is, no, absolutely, not, so.
That's positive.
So, yeah, so that, that's kind of why we're going to pause it, if that's okay.
So public comment is closed on it?
Yes.
And it will show up on a future agenda, whenever you feel like it's ready?
Yeah.
But hopefully, not to lose momentum.
No, 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 we will come back to it in January as a policy committee. And I, I would see us maybe in a, a February agenda meeting, just to give us a bit of time and.
We might need some eyes of staff members.
Exactly.
Oh, good idea, yeah.
I will say that separate of the subcommittee, I did ask town clerk in town I work in about the comment about birth gender, and, and it is public except if it is a sealed certificate, which is basically generally only one parent listed on the birth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was the rule that I got from that.
Yeah, and actually, the, the, the person who shared that public comment with us actually came back and said, oh, I'm rescinding that part, that particular part, or whatever, so, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you for the update. One quick, can you just speak to the NASDAQ document in the packet?
I can, thank you. So last, each year, NAS, as a member of NASDAQ, they create enrollment projections for us. NASDAQ, New England, so.
Sorry, I just looked at it.
Development, ends in council.
I just looked at it, too.
Oh, the E, okay, New England School Development Council, okay. I was thinking the DE, the E was something else, but I guess, whatever. So NASDAQ is a New England-based group that works with schools on a number of different things. And, well, thanks. And they send us these projection enrollments. This year, I asked Kathy to look at the, and they didn't send them until last week. So I did my budget presentation in the Monday night. And I've been just rolling over the numbers, it's something that we've talked about, as opposed to what we've seen in the past, where sometimes there's a different, you know, different equation.
Births and stuff like that, yeah.
The, the survival quotient and the different things that people, which is what NASDAQ uses, and it's what also MSBA also uses when they're looking at long-term projections. So I asked Kathy if she would look at this year's projections and last year's projections to see what the difference might be in, just even in their long-range piece. And that's what we've, we've shared with you, this year's NASDAQ, just overall report, so you can just see that. Because I would have included that had it been available for the budget presentation, anyway. But then Kathy did a nice job looking at the two years and kind of broke down what the differences were, where they overestimated and then, or, or where the numbers were different, what they projected versus the actuals, just for, it's something for you to see, because that is one of the questions that came up, especially when we're talking about class sizes, is, well, but what if we have move-ins? And I've said, well, okay, but when we even look at what we've actually been dealing with, we haven't seen these drastic changes as we fear. And so that's why I said, let's just deal with real numbers as we're going from section to section, from year to year. Because rather than in the past, sometimes we've increased the numbers, and then that hasn't come to fruition. And so I would much rather just deal with the actual students that we know are enrolled and then adjust for any changes. So what you see is the, the Google sheet is some nice, just work that Kathy did, looking at those two different, two different things. And I just wanted to share it with you. So if you look at it and if you have any questions, we can certainly ask, answer those in the, in the future as well, too. But it just seemed like supplemental information for you, nothing.
I just wanted to call attention in the minutes and, for the community, that it was in the packet.
Yeah.
And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Tom with the sign?
Yes.
Thank you.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye, all right.